Good evening, everyone. This is a conference meeting of the City of Orange Township held in Council of Chambers, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey on Wednesday, November 7th, 2018, at 7:06 PM. Roll call, Councilwoman Easton?
Here.
Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Here.
Councilwoman Saris Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is late, Councilwoman Wooton is late, Council President Coley?
Present.
Also President Joyce Lanier, the city clerk, Chris M. Hartwick, the business administrator, Gracia R. Montillas, the city attorney, Captain Vinnie Vidiello from the Police Department, Marlon G. Towns, let's say, the research officer, Joy LaScary, Chief Financial Officer, Lisette Sanchez, Clerk's Office, and Quinn Fields, Clerk's Office. Please stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Please be apprised, anyone wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign one book. Each person signing the book will be allowed to speak for a maximum of five minutes. The requirements of NJSA 10:4-9 et cetera, Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in a record transcript on July 12th, 2018, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the office of the city clerks. We do have a matter of discussion. BA Hartwick?
Yes. I don't see them here yet.
Oh, they're not here?
Not yet.
Oh. Okay. So, council members...
If you want, I'll do it.
It's up to you.
It's up to the council member.
If you have all the information, you can answer all the questions?
I can answer most of them.
Okay.
Crane Street.
Marty Mays arrived at 7:08, Public Works Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here we are. See? That's all it took.
You want to introduce him real quick? Just introduce him.
I'd like to introduce one of the principals of Russo Development, Ed Russo, who's responsible for the acquisition of the Liko Red site and the development that we denominate as the Crane Street Development. They call it DNH Development. And he's here to give you a very brief presentation at the request of the council and answer any questions that the council or the public may have when the council president suspends the rules. Because we promised to get Mr. Russo to his parent-teacher conference.
Thank you. It's good to be here tonight. Just, I'll try to keep my remarks very brief. We...
Just state your name again for the record.
Sure. It's Ed Russo, R-U-S-S-O. We started the planning for this project almost two years ago now. This is, our project is proposed on the Liko Red property just south of the New Jersey Transit Station. The address is 377 Crane Street.
Excuse me. Guys in back, want to keep the comments down? Just kind of picking up up here. Thank you. Go ahead.
During the last couple of years, we've done an extensive amount of due diligence on the site, survey work, design work, environmental sampling. We've designed our proposed development. We've been before the planning board, gotten site plan approval, and we're scheduled to close on the acquisition of the site in December. And getting the redeveloper agreement and the financial agreement for this project approved by the governing bodies are really the last, you know, one or two things that we need before we're able to close. We submitted an application for the financial agreement earlier this year. We've appeared before the Finance Committee a number of times dating back initially to this spring. We've had pretty extensive interaction with the city's financial consultants, you know, and exchanged our financial modeling, our projections in terms of costs and revenues, and what the economics of the pilot would be, which I'm happy to speak to tonight if you'd like me to cover some of the highlights. But, you know, in general, we're excited to be coming to Orange. We believe that development around the train station, which has, you know, begun over the course of the last couple of years. There's been several mixed-income projects that were developed by RPM, by L&amp;M. We're proposing what would be, you know, we believe the first 100% market-rate project of scale built in Orange in a number of years. The project is just over 200 units. You know, other than getting a redeveloper agreement and a financial agreement, we're not seeking any other, you know, public subsidy. The project would be 100% privately financed. And our goal would be to start construction sometime in early 2020. We have a short-term leaseback with the existing property owner that needs to relocate out of the building after we purchased the site. Liko Red has been an occupant of the building for a number of years. They've already located a replacement facility in Branchburg, New Jersey. They were holding off on fitting out that facility and moving until they knew our deal was going to close. And they've, and we've agreed to a one-year leaseback with them so that they have all of 2019 to fit out their new space and vacate the property. And upon them vacating, our goal is to demolish the existing buildings and then, you know, hopefully start construction shortly after that. So, that's just a brief overview. I'm happy to really take your lead. I can go through our pilot presentation that we made before the Finance Committee. I can...
Well, for the viewing public, can you just describe the units to break down?
Sure.
What exactly is, you know, the footprint of that...
Sure. So, I brought, at the request of Councilwoman Williams at the Finance Committee, I brought just a one-page handout that has some, you know, high-level bullet points about the project location, number of units, which I can provide to you.
Yeah, that's fine. But prior to that, just kind of put it on the record so folks out watching this, they can hear what it is that you're trying to do.
Sure.
Exactly.
So, we're proposing a six-story building. The first two levels of the building are proposed to be covered parking. The ground level would be reserved for residents of the building. And then the second level of the parking deck is intended to be shared between residents and also used for public parking, for commuters. And our pilot application, our financial agreement, contemplates that we would build the second level of parking at our cost, and the city would have the option, not the obligation, but the option to lease the second level of the parking deck for essentially no rent, other than paying for expenses for things like insurance and electrical costs for lighting, and that we would be contributing the construction cost of the deck to the city. And then above that second level of parking, we have four stories of residential apartments proposed, 208 units in total, heavily weighted to studio and one-bedroom units. We only have 28 two-bedroom units. The balance of the units, about 180 are studio and one-bedrooms. And, you know, if you look at what's being built, not just in Orange, but surrounding communities like Harrison, Carney, Bloomfield, Newark...
Can you put on the record the parking spaces, just so folks can hear?
Sure.
What it is that we're proposing?
Approximately 300 parking spaces. About 145 on the ground level of the deck. That's intended for resident use. And then about 155 on the second level of the deck. That's for shared parking between residents and commuters, public parking.
Okay.
And the 17 across the street.
And we do have approximately 17 spaces on the south side of Crane Street along 280...
That's the surface parking.
Surface parking for visitors primarily.
Councilmembers, any questions, comments?
This has been to the planning board. It's been approved. We've gone through extensive negotiations. We started out... I'm always competing with the fire department. Sorry. We started out with a more conventional approach to the pilot negotiations, but quickly saw an opportunity to capitalize on the developers' willingness to speak with us and negotiate the construction of the second level to the deck. We've had extensive meetings with New Jersey Transit. This will help solve some of the parking issues that we experience and is a different model than anything else that the city has ever seen. This is a $3.5 million-plus contribution upfront in terms of the financing of the deck, and we retain the revenue stream. Over the life of the pilot and the parking arrangement, the net operating income or the net operating revenue increase from this arrangement over what the pilot would have been is approximately $7-plus million. So, we're excited about being able to work out a business arrangement of this nature. We will continue to have discussions with New Jersey Transit regarding their parking lots, which are directly adjacent to this level of parking that we'll be getting. So, the administration is excited about this project and about bringing it before the council and the public. We'll answer any questions that anybody has.
All right. Right now, we will take questions from the audience, if you have any questions regarding this development while the developers here.
First of all, I want to welcome you to Orange.
Ah, thank you.
I'm happy that a real developer is coming to Orange. And the reason I say this, you know, we are breaking the hold of various other redevelopers. We have newspapers...
Mr. Fell, state your name for the record.
My name is Jeffrey Fell. I'm a local business owner, 268 Main Street. I'm also an attorney, and I'm a mortgagee. I welcome Russo's here. However, shame on you. How dare you have these presentations not being advertised?
Mr. Fell, can you focus on the questions for the developer, please?
Yes. Rab. Rab. Can somebody explain to me what a rab is? Because that's the difference here. That's, this is a new transaction...
Mr. Fell, your questions or comments should be narrowed to...
I did ask a narrow question. What's a rab and how does it apply? No, I'm not going to calm down.
Council President, first of all...
Mr. Fell.
I just asked what a rab is.
Council President, I would ask that you direct Mr. Fell to either adhere to the rules, allow Council President to actually ask his question before he continues his response, or any questions that he has. I welcome them, but the idea is, we have a new transaction. You're using a rab part component. It's never been explained to the public before and how it's going to work. I think there should be an explanation of how a rab works. This is a novel thing. There's an amended resolution outside because you have to go to the local finance board. Why aren't we talking about that component? I think at some point...
You asked one question. Let him answer the question.
He doesn't answer that question.
So, I have, I had council attending. His name is Jim Furon from Gluck Walrath, and I'd asked that he put on the record what a rab is and why we're using one.
Thank you.
It's eerie for me to see myself up there.
You can see yourself?
Yeah.
How do you look?
Not so well. So, I'm Jim Furon from Gluck Walrath Law Firm, and we are serving as redevelopment council on this transaction. A RAB is an acronym for Redevelopment Area Bond. Under the pilot structure that we are, that is being proposed for this transaction, the stream of pilot payments plus the anticipated parking revenues are going to create an annual revenue stream. Part of that annual revenue stream is going to be used to pay debt service on this redevelopment area bond. It is sized in the amount of $250,000 payable over a 30-year period. So, I believe the annual debt service is $11,000, $12,000, something along that line. The bond is technically a, it is, a city general obligation bond payable by the taxes of the city, but the $11,800 of debt service is well lower than the annual payment stream that you will be receiving from the pilot revenues and the payment in lieu of taxes revenues and from the parking revenues. So, it is a component of the capital stack in the sense that we are financing $250,000 of project costs. However, those project costs are the infrastructure improvements associated with the reconstruction, not the reconstruction, but the improvements to Crane Street, the street improvements, the sidewalk improvements, the lighting improvements, all the things that are necessitated by the project, but are present on the public infrastructure. So, these are, one way to look at it is these are municipal expenses that would have been borne by the city and that the redevelopers' pilot payments are effectively paying for. Another way to look at it is, we are paying a small component of the overall project cost. But in any event, from a financial standpoint, it is a city bond issue which will incur costs of about $12,000 a year, which is more than covered by the pilot payments and the parking revenues that are anticipated. So, I'm happy to answer any other additional questions you may have about that.
And I would just add that the ordinance is 59, 2018 on your agenda for the RAB bond. And there is also a resolution which will talk about making application to the local finance board for that bond.
And let me explain why you need to go to the local finance board for that, because I think that was also raised. You do not need to go to the local finance board for the bond ordinance. You're well within your debt limitation. However, there are two reasons that you would want to go. Number one is, you want to ensure that there is a level annual debt service on that bond issue. The local bond law has normal requirements as to how you set up your maturity schedule. They are such that it is often difficult in a 30-year transaction to have level debt service. You wind up having front-loaded debt service because of those strictures. So, one reason we would be applying to local finance board is to get what's called a waiver of maturity schedule that will allow you to have a level annual debt service scheduled for your bonds instead of a front-loaded debt service. These approvals are routinely granted upon approval, upon application, but you have to apply. The second reason, the more pressing reason, is that the city financial status is such that it, when it accesses the capital markets for any bond issue, not just this sort of a bond issue, it needs to invoke the Municipal Qualified Bond Act. The Municipal Qualified Bond Act is simply a security mechanism for bonds to be sold to the public. It is a revenue intercept concept where essentially, if you have financial difficulties, the bondholders would get first claim to your state revenue sharing, the state aid. The state aid would be applied to your debt service. And it's a mechanism that you have routinely used to access the capital markets anytime you issue a bond. So, the application to local finance board covers those two reasons. And it's just because a RAB bond is like any other bond you would be issuing. And I believe you have on your agenda already other capital bond ordinances in which you're doing the same application.
Correct.
Any other questions from the public?
Ed, would you do me a favor?
Sure.
And just put on the record the unit distribution?
Yes. The total number of units is 208. There are 28 two-bedroom units. 60, excuse me, 64 studios and 116 one-bedroom units.
And your experience, you've done projects in a number of other municipalities. I'd like you to repeat to the full council and the public the experience that you discussed at the Finance Committee meeting with the generation of schoolchildren in these types of projects.
Sure. So, we've built a number of projects in surrounding towns that have similar characteristics to Orange in terms of location proximate to transit, unit distribution of more heavily weighted smaller units, studio and one-bedroom units, as opposed to more family-sized units, two, three-bedroom units. And what we've experienced in places like Carney and Harrison, Hackensack, there's a number of other projects that we've studied throughout Bloomfield and Newark and Union Township. If you look at the actual school-age children data, what we've found is that very few, if any, school-age children are generated from studio and one-bedroom units. Virtually all the school-age children come out of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. And for transit-oriented development projects where you're in a building that has covered parking, it's elevator-served, as opposed to, you know, lower-density, lower-cost projects, the number of school-age kids for even two-bedroom units is typically one or two per 10 units. So, if you translate that to this project where we have 28 two-bedroom units, you know, we believe that the data suggests that you would have a handful, less than five, children spread through, you know, K through 12, living in the project. We also use Rutgers data that isn't just specific to certain projects in the area, but is more of a survey that's been done of over 250 apartment projects done throughout the state. Study was most recently updated in July of this year, so the data is very current. And even that study suggested that you would only have, on average, about eight to nine students per 100 units for a project of this nature. And that's, you know, that's not assuming you have 80% studios and ones like we have. That's assuming a more conventional unit distribution between one, two, and three better. So, it's going to be a small number.
And in the fiscal impact statement that you've been provided that was prepared by Integra, the study that was just referred to by Ed, the Rutgers study, is utilized in that report, as is actual data for other projects in Orange.
Councilmembers, any other questions, comments? Mr. Russo, thank you. Get to your orders.
All right. Thank you for having us. And, you know, we appreciate your consideration of this ordinance. And, you know, we look forward to hopefully being a part of the Orange community and, you know, getting going with this project sometime soon. So, thank you.
All right.
Councilmembers, are there any resolutions on tonight's agenda that you wish to discuss? But before we begin that, I'd just like to say that Resolution 322, 2018 was amended. The original resolution did not conform to state law. The amended one does. Also, 319, 2018, has also been amended. And BA Hartwick, could you explain to them why the bond ordinance and the application to the local finance board was also amended?
Sure. On the ordinance number 58, 2018, I've changed the amount from $9,850,000 to an even $10 million to ensure that I have sufficient Section 20 appropriations under the local bond law to pay for the cost of issuance, any engineering costs, rating fees, et cetera, under that ordinance. I thought that the engineering costs, because it was a road ordinance and because we have not done a sustained road capital plan, that the engineering costs might be a little bit higher than we were estimating originally. So, I added $150,000 to the Section 20 costs. I also added the local finance board application resolution so that we have the authority to prepare the applications and get onto the December 13 local finance board agenda. We need to do that for the road ordinance because we're applying for and have been given a preliminary approval from the Transportation Infrastructure Bank that we will be approved if we submit the timely ordinance and application. The reason that's important is because after January 1st, there will be some changes to these programs, and we're getting in ahead of those changes. So, on the $10 million, the biggest benefit to the city under that program is that we only pay interest on 25% of the bonds. Interest on the first 75% is waived by the state. So, it's a very good program. Did I catch everything?
Yes.
Also, just for the public's knowledge, Resolution 317, 2018 has been pulled. We'll come back with that. Resolution 317, 2018, it's the transfer of appropriation resolution. We'll be back on the 20th of November with a new transfer resolution.
Councilmembers, are there any resolutions or ordinances that you wish to discuss?
Give me a second, please. Council President?
Councilman Johnson?
I had reached out to the city attorney today for some clarification on 319, 2018. So, a little confused from where we were leaving with one of the attorneys and then shifting work to a new law firm. One of the questions, I was looking at the resolutions that were awarded to the law firm that is represented by Attorney Calderon, and one of the resolutions were, in fact, that she would be serving in capacity of taking care of tax matters. But this new resolution doesn't discuss anything about that. So, I was looking to confirm that she's still working on some things, and other things are being transferred to a new contract.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. First of all, the, as the city clerk stated earlier, the resolution has actually been amended, and copies are being made right now for distribution to the public. With respect to Councilman Johnson's questions, Attorney Calderon Arnold is in fact still working on some of the tax appeal matters. The other, the two matters that are being transferred or that are proposed to be transferred to Mr. Pennington's firm are two non-tax-related matters, and that, again, Ms. Calderon, because of a new position that she has assumed, she's unable to represent the city or its employees with respect to those two matters. So, that's why they're being recommended to go to the Pennington Law Group. The reason that they're not going to another, to other attorneys that are on the city's list of approved attorneys, because both of those matters involve multiple defendants, and therefore, the other attorneys that are currently on the list are representing other defendants in those two cases. So, therefore, we're not, we certainly don't want to create a conflict by obviously picking an attorney that's already on the list, that's already in that, in those two cases. So, we're giving them to a firm that's... So, we're giving them to a firm that's, again, not, that's clearly not on the list, but certainly not a party, not representing any party to the two actions.
So, would it be fair to say that 319-2018 will be exorbiting most of our, the work that she was gonna do in those previous resolutions and contracts?
Correct.
Okay. So, are there any balances that are left over? Do we exceed any of those limits in those contracts?
I'd have to check on that. I don't believe that we've exceeded the limits that we originally awarded to Ms. Calderon, to Attorney Calderon Arnold. I don't believe that's the case, especially since those two cases are not that old. So, I don't think that we've gone over our limit with respect to what we had contracted with the prior attorney.
Okay. So, there should be a balance left over that can, that could be exorped into the $25,000?
There should be. But again, I don't have those figures, the exact figures in front of me.
These are also cases for which we have coverage with the PEGF, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Which means that the attorney's fees ultimately will be reimbursed to the city through, from the GEF.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Council President?
Yes, sir.
I wasn't finished.
Okay, sorry about that.
But is there any way that this resolution, although it has the names in the third whereas, is there any way that the resolutions that were awarded to Ms. Calderon's, Calderon's firm be associated with identifying those people? Because if, in fact, this was gonna be, these resolutions, the work of these resolutions are gonna be awarded to a new law firm, specifically identifies why these law firms are being picked up, as opposed to somebody saying, oh, they're gonna assume the work of. These resolutions were just awarded in July. And if, I don't know my legal expertise, but if they're just doing discovery of some matter like that, it's probably very little building against those resolutions at all, if I'm correct.
Sir, and I, and just to get clarity with respect to your question, Councilman, it sounds like the same question that Council President asked with respect to whether or not all of the funds that were allocated or at least reserved for Attorney Calderon have, are left over for the new firm, whether it's the Pennington Law Group or whatever other firm. Is that, is that what you're asking? I'm not sure what you're asking.
Yeah. In essence, the CFO is giving us a certified letter that there's money in the budget.
Right.
Okay. And is she, is she looking at the same money that's in the budget that was awarded on the resolutions for Calderon?
Well, it would have to be under the same account because it comes under professional services from the law department. So, I'm, it would be under the same account. So, the funds are being certified from the same account that came from, that was, that was discussed when Attorney Calderon received her, her award of the contract.
So, I think this will help. We give the council a lot more detail in the budget workbook than is required. So, we show you a professional services account within the law department, and that amount is then broken down by a variety of contracts, and you see those numbers allocated to contracts. But the only number that we're bound by is the aggregate number in the professional service account. So, let's just say, for example, that we pay, that we have $100,000 in the professional services account, and Jeanette Calderon Arnold is allocated $25,000, and the Critchley Law Firm has allocated $75,000, right?
I follow.
But the Critchley bills come in at 40, and Jeanette Calderon's come in at 60, we're still within the 100 for the account. So, as long as the encumbered funds or committed funds are less than that which is in the professional services account, the CFO can certify funds. We don't have to actually live by the allocation as long as we're within the account allocation. It's almost impossible to, to the penny predict what a law firm is going to bill us in any given case.
Understood. But is Resolution 319-2018 extending into the budget year 2019?
It may be, but we won't know that until we are finished with the 2019 budget. And when we get to presenting the 2019 budget, if the case is still alive, we will allocate for it accordingly in that professional services account.
So, the $25,000 that's in this Resolution 319-2018 is no way gonna be spent this calendar year.
I would find it highly unlikely.
Okay, that's, I wanted that on the record, because it's a lot of mumble jumbo, but it sounds good.
Well, I'm not sure what's mumble jumbo.
I mean, the way you're manipulating or explaining the municipal funds.
Well, I'm not manipulating any of the funds.
I agree with you.
We're telling you what the law is with regard to what we're, what we're bound by.
Council President, I agree with the BA and the City Attorney 100%, but this document had to be clarified to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, are any other resolutions, Councilman Johnson?
By the way, did, did the Finance Committee meet on and discuss this?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Are you guys submitting a report tonight?
No. The council, the...
She's, she's like, I think she has.
The Finance Committee gonna make a recommendation on this? No.
The recommendation, according to the notes, was that the resolution be revised, and they're making a copy of the revised resolution now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Any other questions, comments, resolutions, ordinances, council members?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Jackson?
My question is regarding the clarification as well, and this is between ordinances 50-2018 and 51-2018. There's...
You start with 50 first?
Excuse me?
You start with 50?
50 and 51.
Okay.
One is an ordinance and the other is a bond ordinance, but I would like clarification on the difference in the amount. They are in reference to the same property, 425 Main Street. Ordinance 50-2018 shows the purchase price of $1,990,000. And then the bond ordinance referencing 425 Main Street is for appropriation of $3 million for bond, and I just wanted some clarification about the difference.
Sure. What you actually have to do is you have to read number 50, number 51, and number 49 in what my law school professor would call pari materia. So, in 49-2018, the improvements that we would be making to 425 Main Street in connection with the relocation of the Rossi business authorizes $800,000. Then, in 50, the acquisition cost for 425 Main Street is 1.9. And together, those two combine to bring us the required amount that's necessary to close the transaction, or have the funding mechanism to close the transaction in bond ordinance 51-2018. And the excess amount that is shown there over and above the 2.7 or the 2.8 million is effectively the cost of issuance, should we ever have to go and issue notes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions, resolutions, ordinance, council members? Madam Clerk?
Sorry. For the record, Adrian Matt, the Finance Director, arrived at 7:16 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion? Second?
Motion by Johnson, second by Jackson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:44 PM. Mr. Mays, we'd like to put on the record that the clock needs to be fixed.
Right now, like right now.
This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township, held in Council Chamber, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Wednesday, November 7, 2018, following the conference meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Laid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the red heat and justice for all.
Roll call, Councilwoman Easton?
Here.
Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Here.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is absent. Councilwoman Wooten is absent. Council President Coley?
Present.
Also, President Joyce Lanier, the City Clerk, Chris M. Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Gracia Armentilis, the City Attorney, Adrian Matt, the Finance Director, Marty Mays, Plan and Public Works Director, Captain Vinnie Vidiallo, Police Department, Joy LaScary, Chief Financial Officer, Marlon G. Towns, Legislative Research Officer, Lisette Sanchez, Clerk Office, and Quinn Phils, Clerk Office. The requirements of NJSA 10 Colton 4-9 et cetera, the Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, published in a record transcript on July 12, 2018, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the office of the City Clerk. Approval of meeting minutes, September 4, 2018, conference and regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move. Second.
Move by Jackson, second by Johnson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Department Monthly Revenue Collection Reports. The Clerk's Office for the month of October collected $4. The Historic Preservation Commission for October collected 70. Department of Community Affairs for August 2018 collected $24,095. Department of Community Service for the month of September 2018 collected $8,560. There are no constable reports. Oprah Reports. For the month of October, we received 149. Out of that, we completed 126. We still have 23 pending. This note, this number for pending from the beginning of the year is incorrect and will be reported correctly at the next meeting with the report of what reports, what Oprah requests are outstanding. Council Reports.
Nothing from Finance? Planning?
No.
ABC?
No.
Library?
No report from the library.
No report, housing? Nothing from the housing, okay. Police? Any updates? You wanna share with us?
Yeah.
Sure, why not?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Captain Vinnie Vidiallo, Chief Law Enforcement Officer, Orange Police Department. Just wanna go over a couple of things that our, you know, guys have done this week, give them some credit. Then last week, our police officers have saved four individuals using Narcan. Now, what Narcan is, it's a nasal spray, and it's an opiate antagonist, which means it counteracts the effects of an opiate overdose, heroin, et cetera. So, we saved four individuals this week alone doing that, our gentlemen. And then last week, on Thursday, November 4, November 1, officers observed a male at Maiden Park putting a handgun into his waistband. They saw this, they took immediate pursuit on foot, they caught him in the bushes of 83 William Street. They arrested him, and on his possession was a handgun and a major quantity of heroin, crack cocaine, and ecstasy. And that was just out of a routine patrol. And then just last night, our special operations unit conducted a search warrant on Scotland Road. An individual was arrested, and it was a female, 25 years old, and recovered were $95 of heroin, a warrant marijuana, and $2,700 in cash. So, our guys are out there, they're motivated, their morale is up, and they're, they're doing a great job. And with that being said, I just wanna let everybody know to continue calling the hotline. I mean, it's very important, and it's monitored 24/7. And the number of our hotline, hotline is 973-666-0097.
Say it again.
And also, if you guys would continue to view our Facebook, we post everything that's been going on in the city, from our community service to our, our jobs that I just mentioned, and it's orange, New Jersey spelled out, Police Department on Facebook. So, we'd appreciate it if you continue viewing it and liking it.
Yes, Councilwoman?
I would like to thank you for the update. It came out of my South Ward meeting that the residents wanted to have updates, and we told them about the Facebook page.
Yes.
So, it's almost like the police slaughter. So, I thank you for letting us know the arrests and things that you're making, especially Scotland Road, Scotland Road, because that was the hot topic in my meeting.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Council members, any other questions, comments for Captain Vinnie Vidiallo?
Captain, I just wanna say that we've been getting some good comments about the police force.
Thank you.
From your neighboring towns, and they think your offices are very professional and courteous. So, that is a whole change from what was before. So, I'm just saying to ask them to keep up the good work.
Exactly.
Because people are watching, and they're starting to comment how courteous they are, how nice, and maybe that's the new group coming in, I don't know.
No, it's everybody. Under the administration and under the leadership of Director Todd Warren?
Exactly.
We've been changing the culture of the police department, and it, and it has been effective, and it has been working, and, and you know what? We're seeing the difference.
And it has been noticed.
And have you also noticed that we put an SRO in the school?
Exactly, and they appreciate him, they love him, they, he's doing a good job interacting with the kids, and also in the streets in the afternoon.
Yes.
Because we met last week, but I understand they had a good project to result today.
Bless you. Yes. He's doing a great job.
Yeah.
And we're still...
The Board of Education loves him.
And we're still recruiting for Class Threes. We put another ad up today.
Yes, we did. So, we're looking for Class Threes and...
Can I apply?
You can apply. You don't qualify.
If I may, Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
All right. Thanks, you and the Police Department for all your hard work, Captain Vidiallo.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I wanted to ask you, the two individuals that were recently arrested, I'm just curious, were they Orange residents or were they from outside?
Orange residents.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Captain, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from the Fire Department?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Who are you?
Deputy Chief Cosmo Politi, Commander of the First Corps. I have a report here from Director Douglas and Deputy Chief Spearman. The last three weeks, we've responded to 182 alarms, bringing our year-to-date total We had two fires reach the level of second alarm. October 17th was a single-family structure on the corner of Elmwood and South Center, big older house, fire on the second floor, managed to get it out. Last week was 159 Elm Street, multiple family, reached second alarm, partial collapse of the roof, no extension beyond the building of origin. We also had a confined space rescue, 135 South Center Street, October 23rd, a worker fell to the bottom of the elevator shaft, OFD, along with UMD NJ medics treated and removed the patient from the elevator shaft. We've provided mutual aid to surrounding communities, Irvington, East Orange, and West Orange, a total of five times in the last month, and we have received both of our second-alarm incidents, mutual aid from the surrounding towns as well, including Montclair, South Orange, and Milburn. We have, throughout the month of October, which is Fire Prevention Month, as everybody knows, we had, in addition to multiple visits to the firehouse, both Washington Street and Headquarters, we went to 12 different schools and daycares, total of 4,300... Total of four thousand three hundred and fifty-three children were handed out all their bags of goodies and given a fire prevention presentation. Last Saturday, we had our Smoke Detector Initiative. We distributed fifty-three smoke detectors, distributed and installed fifty-three smoke detectors in the North Ward. We had on-duty members as well as volunteers from the Fire Department, and approximately twenty student volunteers from the Orange High School. And also, on this past month, in Fire Prevention Month, October twelfth, we hosted a program called After the Fire, which, if any of you ever get a chance, it's two young gentlemen who survived the Seton Hall Dormitory Fire back in two thousand. I've actually seen their presentation twice, and it's, it's, if you're ever in the area and you see it, it's worth hearing their story. It's about an hour long, it's really great. Anyway, we had a presentation for the senior class of the Orange High School, and, you know, their preparation, hopefully for college next year, in dormitory fire safety. But again, personally, I've seen that presentation twice, and it's, it's very good, so if you ever get a chance. As far as fees and collections, we've collected seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars in revenue from home inspections, violations, and registration fees. We've conducted approximately sixteen home sale inspections, seventy-one life hazard inspections, responded to six complaints, and forty-six violations closed. And that brings us current.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes.
Could you just spell your name?
Sure, it's Cosmo, first name, C.O.S.I.M.O., last name Politti, P.O.L.I.T.I.
And also, can the Clerk's Office have a copy of your report?
Yes, ma'am, I have it right here, you can have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Captain Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Communications and petitions. There was a letter received from the PVC assessment for the NORCA pill, third and fourth quarter user charges. Notice of the public hearing. Citizen comments pursuant to section four-dash-ten.
The Council needs to know that I reviewed this petition, and I'll be working with the City Attorney, because if NORC wins this appeal, the money will come from all of the other customers of PVSC. That's the way the contract with PVSC works. This is an eight million dollar appeal. That means that if NORC is successful, we're looking at an increase in our PVSC assessment of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars.
Pursuant to section four-dash-ten of the Code of the City of Orange Township, each person addressing the Council shall step up to the microphone, shall give his or her name and address in an audible tone for the record, and unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, shall limit his or her address to five minutes. The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner, any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
Thank you, sir. Jan Morel?
Good evening, Janice Morel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Three-zero-nine, excuse me, Lawn Ridge Road. I've spent more time than I would, really would have liked, so I do commiserate with the Council members with your most recent packet. Have several requests. First one being that before you consider the ordinances for second reading, please ask Frank McInerney to come and do a presentation on his audit report. We need to know how much of the expenses that the different ordinances will generate for this year will be applicable to the two thousand and eighteen budget year, how much will be encumbered in the two thousand and nineteen budget year. Need to know whether or not the two thousand and eighteen budget can take the hit. I listened very carefully to the BA about the ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, but I have the same request. In regards to Resolution three-zero-nine, Alden and High Street, subsequent to the meeting that was held here, I want to say last Thursday, my days running into each Alden and High Street, I have checked with the EPA, that's the US EPA, the New Jersey DEP periodically since the year two thousand and fifteen. Donna Williams provided a link, and I did check the link. She stated that everything has been remediated. The National Superfund List does not list Alden and High Street as having been fully remediated. I have been in touch with the District Director over in New York, as well as the New Jersey DEP Director. They keep passing the buck back and forth. If there is going to be a fully engaged children's park there, playground, somebody needs assurance that that property is indeed safe for anyone to walk on it, particularly children. I have walked it twice within the last six months. I have seen strange fungi growing. I'd like, I'm not an expert in fungi, so don't ask. But I'd like someone who is an expert to certify that that property is fully remediated. I want to remind you that there are several states, including Nevada, which ceased remediation of radium-infected soil and property, because the life of radon and other contaminants have been estimated to be one thousand six hundred years, meaning that stuff will be here long after we're dead, buried, gone, burned, whatever. We need assurance that we're not jeopardizing children. I won't even talk about the potential liability to the municipality, but somebody of authority, and sorry, it can't be Marty Mays, he's not an environmental specialist. I've seen no evidence of the pipes that allow the escaping of radon and other contaminants. We need some assurance. But now, back to the most important pressing thing. The ordinances forty-nine, two thousand and eighteen, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-eight, they loom large for us, who just experienced almost an eight percent increase in our taxes. We need to know from McInerney what recommendations he has. We need to hear from the Budget Consultant, I believe that's Dieter Lurch. Somebody needs to give us some assurance that you will not be hitting us each and every year for an eight percent increase. Otherwise, you will be looking at a ghost town. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Feld.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Feld, a local businessman, an attorney, NMRG, who's local at Vegas, and his address is two sixty-eight Main Street, Orange, New Jersey. As my custom, I've delivered various heads-up memos with exhibits to the Council and the Legislative Research Officer, the BA, and the City Attorney. I hope that they're incorporated or made reference to in the minutes that everyone knows that the questions and the exhibits have been given to you, and I incorporate them. I wish Mrs. Stewart was here, because I would give up. She didn't. Mrs. Stewart, a shout-out to you, because yesterday was a very important day for the Board of Education election. People spoke. Now, remember, we are a government of the people, for the people, and by the people, and the people spoke yesterday, not just only in Orange, but throughout the country by taking back the House. And I think Bill Lewis is watching us also. The reason I say that, and why I showed, maybe I showed a little anger less than an hour ago, is about transparency, accountability, and the rule of law. You see on the agenda the number of Oprah, open requests. I'm still waiting for a piece of paper telling me why I'm not entitled to the two-county year two thousand and eighteen FBI subpoenas. This question is open, public meetings compliance. We'll talk about it later on the ordinances about the YWCA. In the last, since our last meeting, some events have occurred, I can't explain. The New Jersey Law Journal published a list of attorneys who are unauthorized to practice law, including that list at that time was the mayor, Mr. White, and Mr. White is an in-house attorney. And I regret that because we wrote Judge Ferentz said in the Willis Edwards Trial Court case that we had a judge, we had a mayor who willfully disobeyed the law. The reason I raise that, because on Friday, a binding and presidential opinion came out by Judge Sabatino. I made reference to it in my memos, I urge you all to read it. And it talks about substantive rights, qualified immunity, and what things happened. In my memo, I made a reference to the Local Finance Board, August two thousand and eighteen minutes. I wish our bond counsel was here, because he spoke at that one. He's also an Essex County Tax Commissioner. And he talks about pilot payments, and one of the things of being revenue payments for the land tax credits, and he recognized that. But when the various ordinances that we had in pilots, when I raised that issue, the Council ignored me. And that's one of the things we have. With the audit, I agree with Ms. Morel, the audit I received last week ago Tuesday, we need to have a discussion on it, because the findings and recommendations are very harsh. It's the second year in a row that there, the number of them and the significance of them are staggering. And it affects, as you remember, when our special outside redevelopment council came here, it says it affects our ability when we go into the capital markets, because that has to be shown to them. It's very important. As to the YWCA appraisals, they were posted, I think the first one was on Sunday, the second one was on Monday, and it wasn't, as to the Rossi properties, there's only one of the properties, two of the other properties are not even appraised yet. As to the agendas tonight, the Pennington, I have the amended Pennington resolution. I can't tell you what the changes are, but two of the litigations existed before October eighteenth. There's new litigation, that's Mr. Holmes' litigation against the city. I don't know, there shouldn't have been any conflict of any attorney that's on the, what we call the shelf registration list from handling that case. I mean, I understand the two other cases, but this is a new case that was filed on October eighteenth, and I'm wondering why that case has been given to Mr. Pennington's firm, considering he wasn't on the list, and it's just a stench. So, this Karsinski firm, I think we should be knowing how much money we pay that firm, because if you look at the bill list, I think there's, they're getting paid about, I think in excess of forty thousand dollars tonight. I think we should have a feel of how much money we've been paying for the outside consultants, because buried in the bill list at the end is a payment of about eighteen thousand dollars to the firm that's handling the FBI subpoena request. You know, it's crazy, we're paying them, but the public can't even see what the FBI subpoena is. It's, it's one of these awkward situations. I recommend, as to Mr. Russo, Aldo Russo of Landkreutzer, who notified me on Friday that he's representing the city in Feld eighteen, I would just ask that the Council adopt a resolution memorializing that, so we know what the caps are, what we are, and we can control that. As to the redevelopment agreement, as to the Crane Project, because of triage, I haven't had an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Feld.
I only have one other question.
No.
It's very, it's very quick. Could you ever answer any of my questions? It's attached to.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Just make sure my questions are in the record.
I'm calling Gordon to eleven Park, please. I intend to speak on the ordinances by themselves, but they are really just bits and pieces of a larger picture. They, they are preparing the, giving space to, to build the recreation center. So, so the recreation center issue is not, not really on the ordinances, therefore I want to reflect on that in, in connection. I, I think here, with this, with these two ordinances, the vegan is really in front of the wars. I, I haven't seen, to begin with recreation center, I haven't seen any formal presentation whether or not there has been work done to assure the public that this property that is going to be opened up, this contiguous property, is the best property and the cheapest property available for the project. And so, without that, I don't see how we can go ahead and simply go into and make contracts, removing, purchasing, and so on. From my perspective, there is an excellent alternative to this, to this property. I am thinking of the hospital site that has been open and unused and, and eyesore and losing value by the day, by the month, by the year. It could house easily. All what we are looking for, it could house at the same time, eventually, the City Hall that is set to be, planned to be eventually moved somewhere else, and it could house at the same time even the police station that is also set to be eventually moved somewhere else. So, and I, I, we would like to see some, some numbers, and we would like to see before we purchase something, you know, is, is there an agreement, in fact? Do we know for how much, what the cost, eventual cost will be, together with pilot? Will the pilot be approved to begin with? So, I think this, all, all these threads are hanging, and it is inappropriate for, for this Council to vote on, on details ahead of the time before the big picture is, is drawn up and, and discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Karen Wells?
Good evening, Karen Wells, two eighty-eight Highland Avenue.
Good evening.
My question is on Resolution three-eleven, two thousand and eighteen, a resolution authorized in the City of Orange Township, blah, 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 to accept the Planning Board's resolution to review and consider the property as known as Block five oh two, it's Highland Avenue, it's a Love of Jesus Properties. I just want to be sure, and this is not a criticism, it's just a fact, that before you vote on this, that you understand the difference between redevelopment and rehabilitation, and I implore you to read New Jersey statutes. One second. And I implore you to read New Jersey statutes, one second, 2013 New Jersey revived statutes, section 40A, 120, 12A 5, because first, let me say, I don't understand why this is being accepted and we don't have a master plan yet. It seems to me we should have a master plan before we decide, okay, we're, we're going to declare this a redevelopment or whatever. Secondly, okay, if this does show up in the master plan, which we're still waiting for it to be finalized or whatever, it really needs to, we really need to do your homework on whether this is redevelopment, rehabilitation, how it's being transferred, who's, who's going to do it, the developer or whatever, because six, seven years ago, we went to court on this and we won, and we'll go again. And we're going to make sure that's right because that's our neighborhood, that's affecting our property value, and we are studying it, believe me. So make sure that you are qualified to understand exactly what this means and how it's going to go, but please consider the master plan, putting this in the master plan before you make a decision on saying, okay, fine, we're going to accept this as a redevelopment agreement. We don't have a master plan yet. Thank you.
This should be a statement, Council President, long with members of the council. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I come before the council, want to thank the community for coming out to our recent-
Such a name for the record?
My name is William Hathaway. Address is 232 Lincoln Avenue in Orange. I come before the council tonight, want to thank the Orange community for coming out to our recent cleanup. We had it on last Saturday. I'd like to thank members of the municipal public works department for coming out, thank Mayor Dwayne Warren, Director Mays, members of the student body at Orange High School, Councilwoman Wooton. I want to thank Mayor Ted Green and his members of the Orange, East Orange Public Works Department for cleaning up our community. Locations we did, we did Hampton Terrace, Western Place, Main Street, Hillier Street, a vacant lot at the corner of William and Glenwood. Also like to thank the members of the city council, reverence to getting that clean community grant, and also Deputy Director Raymond Wingfield. I'm just going to leave these comments with this. Thank you for all that came out. I also like to thank the members of council that came out and supported us during our football season, Councilman Chris Jackson, I saw you at the games, like that Councilwoman Summers Johnson, thank you for coming out and supporting us, we did not make the playoff. And also former Councilman Elway Corbett, as always on our sideline. Hope to see you guys in April for our next cleanup. Thank you.
Is there a motion to close citizen comments?
Uh, may I? No. Wait, wait.
Come on, come on, Ms. Stewart.
I don't have that much.
Come on, Ms. Stewart.
That's right.
Get your knife back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gloria Stewart, the resident of Orange. And first, I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to say a few words, even though my name wasn't there, so it's flexibility. Thank you. First I want, well, next I would like to just say, on Saturday, as Mr. Hathaway spoke, I witnessed some of the cleanup and it was on my street as he stated. And my first thought was, was it political? But the thing is, you know, they did do some work. And then as I went to East Orange and was on my way back, I saw the prosecutor doing the same thing. However, her group was blowing the leaves and packing the leaves, so I was impressed and sort of connected me with what was happening in our town. So thank you to those who were part of the action. And then I would like to go further with my usual. In my building, I work at Hayward Avenue School, there's one of the employees that's a resident of Plainfield. So of course I asked her who her mayor was, and she didn't share it with me. And so my same concern is you have a mayor of a city working as our finance director. I might be wrong, but you know, I want to mention that. And then too, I know you extended the invitation to the mayor to be here, so my concern is, is he above being present at your council meeting? And I know you can't answer, but I'd just like to put it out there. And in that same vein, as I left the house running late, I did see you guys on the TV. So I'll go back and finish what I started, and I just want to thank you for at least having that part. And maybe if we can continue with that station, where we could do more with the news in Orange, not just for replay, 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 but it's just food for thought. Going back to the election, having our, I guess it's the second part of the elected board, I am pleased that it's moving forward in that vein. My only disappointment was, and I guess lack of understanding is, once we got it, I just thought we were going to have a clean sweep, but it doesn't work that way. That you, it's like a roll off from the already appointed to the newly elected. And I also want to state that being elected doesn't mean that it's not really controlled by administration to a certain degree, but at least you have that opportunity of voting for those who might run as such be the case that took place, was it last night?
Yes.
Yeah. But I just wanted to share with that. And the other thing that I've always, I've been asking about transportation for a young man that lives here in Orange, and he volunteers his service to Hayward Avenue School. And to this date, it has not taken place, Mr. Howard. And I call you because you saw the promise that you're going, well, look into it, doesn't mean that you're going to get it done, but I'm hoping that you will do it. Because I, I feel, if I can take him in the morning, then you know, the city should be able to pick him up, and he lives in the South Ward. Uh huh. And so I just want to say, you know, can you do anything for this young, and you know what, I saw him today. His expectation is that you will give him some kind of transportation. He is, well, I don't know when to say handicapped, but you know, he doesn't even drive. But the desire to volunteer should encourage us all to support his desire in that respect. I'm going to take my seat now, and whatever I miss will come back to me after I sit down. And then that means I have to come back the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Stewart, thank you very much.
Is there a motion to close citizen comments? Motion by Councilman Johnson Jr., second by Councilwoman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, Councilwoman Williams arrived at 8:12 PM, and Councilwoman Wooton arrived at 8:21 PM. Play that number in the picket tomorrow. 8:12 and 8:21.
All right, we work backwards, trying to answer some of your questions here. Mr. BA, that transportation for that volunteer?
I'm taking care of it right now.
And Ms. Wells brought up that this resolution should not be presented tonight prior to the master plan. You want to explain why we should move for it and with the resolution as is? Mr. BA?
We've moved on a number of redevelopment designations in the absence of a master plan. The most important thing is to make sure that the master plan incorporates any of the redevelopment areas that have been designated. And based upon the review that we've undertaken of the master plan to date, it's still in line with all of the redevelopment areas. Some of them are being recommended to be modified. So it's just a question of if the council adopts the resolution, then the master plan will incorporate the requirements that need to be incorporated. There's no requirement that one predate or be adopted before the other.
If I may also ask a question for some clarification. She mentioned the distinction between rehabilitation and redevelopment. Could you speak to that, please?
Sure. The rehabilitation designation has a, a different standard that's applied under the statute in order to meet the rehabilitation standard. The redevelopment standard is a much more difficult standard to reach under the statute. There are enumerated factors in the statute that you have to look at before making a either determination. Both determinations have to be made by resolution after a study, but the rehabilitation determination standard is easier to meet than the redevelopment standard.
Mr. BA, Ms. Gordon, just asked the cost, roundabout cost for the rebuilding, I mean, for the building of a new city hall and police department over at the hospital site. I don't think that we ever even crunch the numbers. I can't even begin to tell you, I can't, I can't even begin to estimate how much that would, would cost. And I don't think we had that conversation yet.
No. So we haven't had the conversation, but it's not a secret that, you know, we've been working on the hospital site for a while, at least, you know, in earnest for the last 30 months. But here's, this is an example of a very, very complicated property. Property was acquired by a group called the Blacklight Group. They used a single purpose vehicle corporation called Orange Flats LLC. They borrowed money to do the acquisition, initially $3 million. They added some additional lots and parcels along Henry Street and Ivy Court, and then they refinanced their mortgage to 6.8 million. The note has allegedly been transferred or sold from Capital Finance Corp. to an as-yet unidentified entity. So for the city to get involved, and we are going to get involved, as I've indicated in prior meetings, we're in the process of conducting appraisals on the property for purposes of eminent domain. But that process with the challenges that the site poses is much more of an intermediate term process. And by intermediate term, I mean, you know, three to eight years. And here's why. There is an aggregate lien on the property, financial lien of approximately $7.4 million. That lien is comprised of a $6.8 million mortgage plus additional taxes that were advanced and paid by the mortgage holder. We have an estimate that we've worked up for the demolition and remediation of the site, and it does not include the removal of either of the two corner buildings on Henry and Essex, which were the old nursing school buildings. But the balance of the buildings for remediation and demolition is a cost of between $19 to $22 a square foot. When you multiply that out by the square footage and add a contingency for remediation for the two buildings that would remain standing, that's an additional $6 to $8 million before you put a shovel in the ground. None of that includes the parking lot across the street. So by virtue of the, of what has transpired with the ownership of the property, it has become a more complicated scenario. The only way, there's, the, the debt that's being carried on the property does not in any way, shape or form relate to the value of the property in its current condition. And certainly not when you add the demolition and remediation costs on top of that. So as I've indicated before to the council and in public meetings, it is in the city's best interest to take aggressive action in connection with that property by having the property appraised and then coming back to the city council after we enter into negotiations, which in my judgment will fail to reach a deal, and we'll seek your approval to file a condemnation action under the eminent domain process. We have looked at a variety of scenarios that include the relocation of municipal facilities as a mixed use development, both there and at another location in the city. So those are not items that are new. What I think we need to understand is that the hospital property does not present a, a current day opportunity or solution for the rec center property. We did look at, at those issues in selecting the structure that we did select. So we'll continue to work on the hospital property, we'll be coming back to you, you know, within the next few months. We should have the appraisals by the end of the year. We'll have negotiations with the property owners once we have the appraisals. That's all statutorily required. And after we engage in those negotiations, if we don't come to some deal that we have to present, then we'll follow the eminent domain track. If we have a deal to present, we'll bring it to the council and discuss it publicly.
Thank you, sir. And the audit review and budget review prior to ordinance 49 through 51?
I can tell you that the impact on the 2018 budget, other than, other than the encumbrance of the down payment, there will be no 2018 impact for the ordinances. There is the possibility that we would issue notes. There's also a possibility that we would not issue notes, depending upon how the negotiations with the developer go. If we were to issue notes, the cost of issuance can be identified and would be encumbered in the 2018 budget, but on notes, it's relatively insignificant, it's a relatively insignificant or small cost. The interest cost would hit us in the 2019 budget, and we can allocate for that when we do the 2019 budget. One of the things that needs to be stated clearly is that because of rule changes governing the role of an auditor, and also rule changes by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, our audit firm is precluded from giving financial advice to the city. They, under those rules which have been adopted within the last five years, they can't make the kind of presentation that was suggested. A financial advisor can offer some of that insight and guidance, and for a variety of reasons, we will be moving in the direction of procuring- And for a variety of reasons, we will be moving in the direction of procuring a financial advisor. And I expect that that will be a resolution before the city council in either the second meeting in November or in December. But in terms of the budgetary impacts, little to none in 2018, other than what's already been encumbered. And 2019 can be budgeted for. Because there is a process as it relates to ordinance for the road projects, which is ordinance fifty-eight, that may or may not have an impact in the nineteen budget, depending upon the infrastructure bank's timing. But there's no reason to hold up consideration of the ordinances for the type of presentation that was requested. And not only that, but if you do hold it up, you will forego the opportunity to obtain a seventy-five percent interest-free loan from the I Bank.
And can you speak on College Park not being fully remediated by the D E P?
Now, I indicated at the public forum that was held when Ms. Morell raised the issues that I would look into it, and I will. I've started. I will have a meeting with some representatives from D E P. And I'll get on the phone with the E P A. and get the files together. It has been related to me. I have not seen documents, but it has been related to me that the park has been remediated. But I'll go back and do the research.
All right, and once you get those documents, can you just forward them to the clerk's office, please?
Well, I can tell you I'd be happy to. You just have to pay for the copying.
Okay.
It'll be a whole truckload.
All right, and you have Mr. Fell's questions.
Council President, I'm sorry.
Hold on one second. And Mr. B A., you have Mr. Fell's questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes.
But shouldn't there be like a simple, like, so you can just have like a certification or something that just refers you to the whole documented questions?
Yeah, there should be, but when I went on the site, like Ms. Morell said, I couldn't find that.
Once you get it, I'm just saying, okay.
So I'm gonna actually reach out to D E P. and to E P A. If I have to, I'll write them a letter, and we'll figure out what this current status is and what was done. It shouldn't be a secret. It should be a matter of public record.
It was.
Madam Clerk?
Jeff Fell's.
Say again? Yes, you have, oh, his questions, good.
So with regard to the FBI subpoenas, I will sit with the city attorney. I've had one meeting with him. We have to sit with the mayor, and we will get back to you before the, before anybody leaves for the League of Municipalities, which would be next Tuesday. The, there were some other statements regarding the L F B minutes and bond counsel. With regard to the audit findings and recommendations, there will be a presentation at, in the near future. We will have the auditor in to make his presentation to the city council. And we'll be prepared shortly thereafter, if not the same night, to introduce the corrective action plan. And we're also working on the best practices survey, because it's due very shortly. And it's a completely different process than it has been in the past eight years. So Mr. Map is working on that. He and I will meet and we'll make a presentation to the council on that as well.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Council comments?
Council President?
Councilwoman?
First, I would like to thank all the South Ward residents and residents in general that attended my last South Ward meeting, which was October twenty-fifth at Our Lady of the Valley. We went over safety. Also, thanks to the B A., we continue to dispel any rumors. We stopped residents from using the word "all" and things like, just grouping the entire town and things and really stating what the issues are. We explained the success of the tip line, and Scotland Road was a really big issue, so I'm glad to hear there was an arrest there. Our next meeting will be held November twenty-ninth from six-thirty to seven-thirty, and we've been really good with sticking to that hour. Our Lady of the Valley Church provides parking, so there's ample parking for it. And again, we stick to the hour. Many residents that could not make the meeting, they either emailed me, texted me, called me prior to the meeting so that I can get their answers. So I'm very happy that it's working. This is something that I wanted to do for a long time. And due to my son's health, I was unable to commit to monthly meetings, but it's been working out. And I'm hoping that if I ever have to miss a meeting, that one of the at-larges would be able to chair it if needed. And again, all council members are welcome to bring any issues there, because I invite any resident, and directors were also there to answer questions. I'm trying my best to get more district leaders out. I've always been confused of the title. And just to get a better understanding to the residents so that they understand who the people are that represent them. So for all district leaders out there, please, if you're not gonna attend council meetings, I really need you to attend ward meetings so that residents know who the people are that are representing them. So there's consistently the same ones, and then there's some that come. There's some that haven't been to any. So the dates were set in August, so please try to make one, because residents do ask who their district leader is. And also, residents don't think about their districts until voting time, as far as what district they live in in their wards. I would like to thank Turtleback Zoo for hosting Halloween year after year. It's such a great place to bring your kids on Halloween. They have the candy and everything. My youngest son is not really into the candy, more into the dressing up and jumping off of everything. But it's five dollars to get in. It's from four to eight. Right after, I mean, all the parking lots were filled, and it was a very diverse crowd. So it just was a really good look for Essex County. And the new McDonald's on Northfield was open. I was almost lost, because they wanted you to like order your food touch of the street. I was like, oh, no, 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 where's the cashier? But again, that was, yeah, I was like, wait a minute. But again, that was really good for Halloween. It was really hot, so it was a lot of people this year. Congratulations to all the new board members elected last night. I just only ask that you keep it about the children, because I have two precious children in Orange Flats Schools. And I just want you to bring some new ideas and new energy for our children, opening up our schools as safe havens, working with our recreation department in our city, just to make this school district the best school district ever. Thank you very much for that. I stood online at Haywood proudly. My mother called me about one P M. My dad was two hundred and ninety-nine, and my mom was three hundred, so I was very, very excited. I stood online with my sons, and I haven't stood online since President Obama was elected. So I just think all of the Orange residents were coming out. It was really a good, I was all the way by the security guard. So that felt really, really good. And it also dispelled a rumor that people of color and Democrats in general, or just people, don't come out to vote when it rained. That rain didn't stop a thing.
That's right.
And, oh my goodness, the stickers. So I'm standing there signing in to vote. Our clerk walks in with stickers. I'm not thinking anything. I take a sticker. My sons take a sticker. No big deal, right? I posted a picture and needed a sticker. Why did I do that? We didn't have one at our site, so my God, we gotta order more stickers. But it was a good thing, because people from all over the country that voted were posting that they voted. They wanted their stickers. So, and it was a lot of first-time voters, so I don't know why I posted that. But I teach civics, and this year in Newark, they had the students voting on the two questions. And they did that so that the students would go home and speak with their parents, because you can't read all those paragraphs while you're in the booth. And that's what I was trying to explain to my students. I was saying, go home and talk to your parents. Because I remember I had to sit with my mother and go over whatever questions were on there. So I just think that civically, we're getting stronger, and we're starting younger. All the little elections in the schools and things like that. But I will say, there was a lot of complaints on Facebook about the poll workers, from loud and wrong to mean to not kind. I called you at like seven. Someone got smart with my sister. I almost missed work. No, I'm only kidding. But I did call you, like, what? It's like six o'clock in the morning. I don't know what training they go through, but I really, it's too important for them to be nasty. And some people, you know, they gotta do provisionals, and some people, it's their first time voting. They just need to practice some sort of patience. I don't know how to get that message out, but we just, it was like a running joke of the different sites of people. Yesterday, I saw Public Works cleaning out the catch basins, and thank you for that, because it does cause, it was, I think it was Haywood and Mosswood, they were cleaning out over there. And there has been influx of welcoming east, if I see one more welcoming east orange sign, we have to up our sign. I'm like, my God.
That's right.
I mean, they are everywhere. So it's just like, it feels like, every entrance now has a welcoming east orange. So we definitely need to bring back our welcome to Orange with our sponsorships and our flowers and things like that. Because, not saying nothing's, it's nothing wrong with east orange, but I'm just saying, I just, I mean, I saw you one today. I don't know where I was.
By Burger King.
But there's enough, I mean, they're huge. They're bigger than any welcome I've ever seen. So I think it's time for Orange to start becoming more welcoming community. My South Ward meetings are new residents, Hat City, Moss residents, new residents to the city. So we need some signs, B A. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. And first I'll apologize, just want to take the time to apologize. I had a commitment, and I was trying to get here as quick as possible, so please forgive my tardiness. And I'll pick up where Councilwoman Summer Johnson just left off. And when I left work today, I actually called Mayor Grease Chief of Staff and just told him, you know, so we have this friendly competition going on that we always are trying to up each other, which, and sometimes competition is fun, because it improves you. But the sister city opportunities that we have to work on, I hope they continue to increase. But that, it's a really good look. And I will, I just was so excited with the 2018 midterms. As every, it was between Orange and Newark all day yesterday, and the turnout was just phenomenal. I actually did a thank you last night after I finally got home and just want to encourage us that, us to keep going, moving forward, and continue that, let's not just stop the day after and fall back and get into old bad habits. We should always vote like that, and, and just, it makes a difference. And people notice it, and it was, I was very, it was just a very great thing to see. I do want to ask, I know, Ms. Clerk, we talked last night, and just if you can, at some point, do a report. And if we could show the numbers, because I know without question, we've definitely exceeded numbers. There was a report in terms of this was the largest turnout of the millennial generation in the last twenty-five years. So awesome. And I want to congratulate for our local election, our school board, Mrs. Sharif, Derrick Henry, and, good Lord, the young lady's name. Miss Daughtry? Miss Daughtry. Congratulations on being elected to the school board. But I will take the time to thank Ms. Stewart first. It was Ms. Stewart who actually started the process by asking the question, just like she comes up and asks for mayor. It is every week, until we started moving that process forward, she would, that was one of her questions that she would ask at every meet. How do you get, how do you go to elected school board? What's the process, and so on and so forth? So I guess the food for thought right there is that if you do the work, then you won't have to ask that question again. So, but that was her question, and Ms. Stewart, thank you very much. The stickers, I know, I, my neighbor actually came outside. Councilwoman, Councilwoman, we need stickers. Oakwood Avenue School, they had a civic challenge to the students that if you go home and if you can get your parents to vote, and they did vote, and you could bring us a sticker in to prove that they vote, you would get extra credit. So everybody was engaged, and just a great thing that we just do things in a fun way to make it, learning is fun. And also, as many know, I go to Saint James A and M. And A and M Church had a get-out-to-vote challenge. And Saint James A and M usually does the best of everything. But Saint Matthew just had to do the, a crazy job of get a drone and have a get-out-to-vote and put voting all on your windows and everything. But I just want to tell Councilwoman Easton and Councilwoman Johnson that we'll do better at the next election. So we're gonna step up our game as well, okay?
We have the skydivers the next.
Yeah, that was a beautiful, inspiring video. Oh, the cleanup, the citywide cleanup. As you know, the Public Works Committee has been planning, we've been talking about the citywide cleanup here at probably every council meeting, and came together, then it became a sister city project, went to City of East Orange. Weather, we had to get postponed. And, but, that day, I know, I got, I got sick that day, and I was unable to participate. And Councilwoman Walton showed up, and it's all, Deputy Director Wingfield was there doing his part. But Councilwoman, you made the difference of representing the city council. To just see the different pictures, it was a beautiful sight to see, and a lot of people are talking about it, so I really appreciate it. And it was really a good look for both of our cities. Teamwork is the dream work. The, just a couple announcements. There's a Veterans Day Parade, November eleventh, this weekend. Sunday, it's twelve noon to three. It's starting in front of the Church of the Epiphany. It starts at twelve, so you should be there by eleven-thirty if you want to participate in there in the Veterans Day Parade. I don't know veterans that actually want to be in the parade, like put a car in. I don't know if it's too late, but you should contact the Community Affairs Department or Recreation. And finally, just want to send a word of bereavement and prayer out to both our own in the city. Maggie has lost her mom, and her mom's funeral will be this,
Saturday.
Saturday. This Saturday morning at eight-thirty. And our own Keith Pressy lost his brothers, and they were buried on this past Monday. So if you just keep both of their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thanks, Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Walton?
Council President. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody that came out and took the time to vote yesterday. It was great to see all of the millennials out voting. It was great to see that they are interested in their communities and the United States as a whole. Secondly, I would like to thank the Department of Public Works and Marty Mays for a phenomenal job on Saturday out in the rain. It was cold, but we had our rakes, we had our pickers. We were out in the east ward. We did Main Street, just cleaning up the community. It was a real good thing. Thank you to Christina Mateo for bringing her people out. Also, thank you to the fire department for sending out a bunch of young folks. So it was a real good day in the city of Orange Township. On last week, or week before last, we put purple ribbons out front on the trees, and we lit purple, the shrubs in purple in honor of National Domestic Violence Month, which is also in the month of October. And what that was, that's a kickoff to a committee that we're starting. So next year in October, we'll be able to have something that's much bigger and much insane, citywide.
And I promise I'll get you purple or little lights.
We ended up with pink lights, but it was cool. We, we, we ended up with pink lights, but it was cool.
No, they just didn't have any purple.
Um, wanna thank my sister who came down and thought she was gonna relax on this weekend and she was out raking also. It's just a really good feeling to see your community out there with the rakes and cleaning up and everybody doing it like they really want to be out there. That's just a really, really good, good, um, feeling for the city. Um, I have to apologize for being late. I have a personal, um, I don't want to say problem, but I have something personal going on in my family right now, which would not allow me to be here on time. So therefore, um, I was here late, but, um, I do take my job as a city council person. It's something that's important to me and, um, I wouldn't miss it unless it was something, um, bigger than that. And those are, oh, I'm sorry. Tomorrow, which is Thursday, November the eighth, at, from ten AM to two PM, I got an email today from the city that says, come out and get your massage. So. From ten to two. Mr. BA. So there is a health and wellness event. So I want to personally schedule my massage. I don't know what department this came from, but I received an email and so did other people because they called me and asked me about it.
I think that's the kickoff for the open enrollment.
It probably is.
It is, and, yeah, and they have the difference.
So we'll be there with bells on at nine forty-five in the morning for our free massages. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Easton?
First, I just want to thank everybody who weathered the rain, the storm for coming out yesterday to vote. I mean, it was a really bad day, but people were, didn't care about the rain and getting wet. And also thank everybody that voted. I mean, the enthusiasm was back that we hadn't seen in a long time and the sense of urgency. And that's what made the difference. Uh, I just want to say to our Minister of Ministry that I will be drafting a letter because I think it's time the county looked at a lot of our voting machines. Because in my ward, a lot of the names had disappeared, but people had been voting forty years and they got there yesterday and they was not in the book anymore. So that was some of the issues, but they did the provisional ballot. So they were committed to voting no matter how they had to do it. So I think that's something we need to address. I think it's time they updated them, I don't know how, but those machines have been around a long time. So that would be one of the things I will be addressing in the next couple of days. And let's keep up the good work and work together. Unity helps. And the only other thing I want to say that, there is a group called Healthy Orange. And the next meeting, I think, is November the fifteenth, right? I think everybody needs to join that. Because in that committee, they get rid of the negativity that we hear all of the time and they start with positive things. Because people wonder, I hear residents coming to the Mike Seem, why don't anybody come to Orange? Why can't we do this? It's because all of the negativity. And when you don't promote your city as a good place to be, nobody's coming here. No businesses and so I'm just happy to see that Healthy Orange has formed. I plan to continue to be a member and to, we need more residents to hear about it, know about it, so they can participate. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jackson?
And thank you very much to Council President Coley. Uh, I wanted to reiterate the congratulations and thanks to the voters and everyone who came out to, um, express their right to vote. Uh, it's a very important thing, um, and, and citizenship requires such work on, on days like yesterday. You know, some people have money to spend where they can influence legislature, legislators and, um, and, and get access to power with big money. But the rest of us have to do the hard work. Uh, we have to, you know, run for office or we have to support candidates, work on candidates, walk the streets, knock on doors. Um, and for the citizens who come to help us every, every meeting, it's, it's, they have to read the documents and do the research and, you know, bring, uh, relevant questions to us about what we do and, uh, to help keep, make our vision, our focus a little sharper sometimes about, uh, things that the community would like to see happen. Uh, thanks to everyone who helps us be more effective and efficient as legislators. Um, I also like to congratulate the newly elected, all those people who did put their names on the line uh, and accept the obligation of being an elected official. Um, I, I look forward to seeing you grow in these positions and help Orange be the better place. Uh, in particular, the, um, new members of the, uh, Board of Education. Um, I, I'm looking forward to those days when people, um, look at, at Orange as a destination for better education for their children and, uh, those citizens who have to pay for, um, uh, private, who choose to pay for a private school will, um, be able to take advantage of the, the tax, the high taxes they pay and send their children to our public high school. Uh, those days are coming. Um, I'd also like to thank those citizens who came out to, for the cleanup. I wasn't able to make it this year, but, uh, it, it's a very important thing. Um, and, uh, it, it invests your interest in Orange and that it, it becomes of something that you own at a little bit deeper level um, when you work in, on behalf of your, in, work in your community. Uh, and it, it, it's something that feels really good. I encourage more people to get that good feeling of, uh, of contributing to the community at, at a more public level. Um, other than that, it, it remains an honor to serve in this council and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Johnson?
Council President, thank you very much. I just want to touch base, uh, and, uh, and everybody's been talking about this election. It, it was a, uh, monster midterm election, whereas the state of New Jersey turned a deep blue and the Congress took back the House. And Orange played its part in Little Essex County, because we had a tremendous turnout. And I want to thank all the residents of Orange, uh, all the volunteers, everybody that was associated with the election, all the people that took somebody, uh, or nudged a neighbor to go, to do something. Uh, the West Ward, uh, in my unofficial account, was somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred voters for this midterm. And that is like a monster turnout for Little Old West Ward in, in Orange, New Jersey. And congratulations to the three, uh, uh, members of the new elected, uh, school board, uh, for running your campaigns and all the, even the people that didn't win, uh, I guess the next term around when there's time that comes up for people to run. Throw your hat back in it again. And if you're serious about, uh, doing what you want to do, I mean, I guess you got less than, less than a year and a half or two years, uh, when the next election rolls around. But congratulations to those three people. Council President, I'll, I'll end, I'll end my statements this evening with, uh, during my first term, Ms. Councilmember, uh, being barraged with all the different issues in town, you just kind of, kind of stay focused. It was mainly on residents and renters and so forth and their needs. But this, this go around, I, I'm probably going to need to take a, a bigger focus or, or engagement with all the complexities in businesses that are in the West Ward. And I know that there's a lot of small businesses that need to do business, not only with, uh, their own firms, but, but, wh- what, they need to do some business with the city. Because a lot of the expertise is I see on some of these bill lists, uh, where the businesses are, are, are getting, the, the jobs are getting farmed out. And I'm not talking about necessarily black owned, female owned. I'm just talking of small businesses that are in Orange inside the West Ward. And they do have some of the expertise of stuff that we pass some resolutions on. And I just want to, uh, I know it's an ethnic thing with me promoting to a certain extent, but I do need to look into, uh, why, uh, some of, uh, the West Ward businesses, uh, not getting their fair share of, of the, you know, of the, not, not the perks, but the bounty in this town if they, they have a small business and they paying taxes. So I want to wrap up my evening with that. And, uh, once again, thank everybody for, uh, for coming out in this last election. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, Councilwoman Williams, got one thing?
Council President, thank you. I've got to, um, thank the citizens of Orange. You went out and voted on our local public question. We now have the open space tax and, um, we will be doing, our BA loves to educate our, um, our citizens. So we will, um, of the community, be doing some educational sessions of what's next and how do we move forward. Thank you, Council President.
You're quite welcome. Um, I'll be quick. Uh, Mr. BA, um, can you tell me, um, if we're gonna, uh, be starting up the six nine program again, uh, for this year going into next year?
Yes.
Okay, um, do you know when?
We're working on that.
We're working on it.
And, uh, to be candid, uh, it was one of the programs that took a cut in the O and A.
Okay.
For our budget, for budget reasons.
All right. Uh, yeah, that's a very, um, impactful and, and important program. Yeah. That, it, it kind of went over my head, uh, during the, um, budget process, but, um, I personally feel that that program should start, um, as soon as the schools start. You know, it shouldn't be like a delay, um, in the, uh, commitments of, of, of that program. It should start like right away, soon as the year of school year start. So we could, um, just, uh, going forward, if we can just keep that in mind, so we can fully fund that program.
If we can.
If we can. We should be able to.
We're gonna have to find cuts.
We should be able to. And Mr. BA, um, my church, Bethel Baptist Church, next Saturday, we giving, uh, we having a code drive from eleven AM to two PM. Is it possible we can, uh, get this posted on the city website?
Sure.
Madam Kirk, can you get it on the, uh, city, uh, council website as well? And, um, my council colleagues, they, uh, spoke about the, uh, the voter turnout, um, here in Orange, which it was good, but in my opinion, it could be better. It could always be better, based on the numbers that we have. We have roughly thirty-five thousand residents in this town. And out of, and out of the thirty-five thousand residents, we have close to seventeen thousand registered voters. And I believe yesterday, somewhere between fifty-five hundred and six thousand voted. You know, um, for Orange, that's good, you know, but it could be better and it should be better. You know, so that's a lot of votes and that's a lot of people, um, that, you know, for whatever reason, um, decided not to, uh, come out. And it's just not here in Orange where, um, uh, we have a lot of people for what, whenever, for whatever reason, do, do not or refuse to participate in it, um, in, in, in the process. You know, um, I just feel that, um, as a, as, as a person, uh, who grew up in this town, um, who parents came from the South, who family came from the South and seen firsthand, um, how your family, um, was treated and sometime is still being treated. Um, I just don't understand why, um, people just cannot, um, you know, reach back and, uh, and, 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 uh, understand their history, where you came from. It's not like we arrived, we still have a long, long way to go, people. We still have a long way to go. And the city cleanup, I'm glad that, uh, we are doing the city cleanup, but in my opinion, that should be every day. You know, um, in the military, when I was in the military, we, we, we did was call police call. Everyone lined up, showed, showed the length apart and you walked and you picked up everything that did not grow. And that's what should be going. I'm not instructing or telling people to do a police call, you know, um, all through the city, but that's something that you should do on a free, uh, on a daily basis, you know, in front of your house or in front of your neighbor houses, or if you have neighbors that can't get out, just pick up little trash here and there. You know, that's something that should be done on a regular basis, you know? And I think it was mentioned at a last meeting, but I just want to reiterate it. Uh, our very own Councilwoman Easton is going to be honored. Um, is it next week? Yes. At the league.
Does she have tickets?
Um, she have tickets and, um, special, no, actually, a special invite. Special invite. And I just want to say that it's, um, a well, a, a well deserved, uh, uh, honor and recognition. Ms. Easton, thank you for your years of public service and we can, hope that you continue to serve the people of Orange with honor way, the way that you have always.
How many, how many years of service?
Yeah, yeah, how many years has it been?
Put it on the record.
How many years?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years and counting.
Yeah, with this last election, it'll be twenty, God willing, when I retire.
All right. All right. All right, Madam Kirk, that's all I have, thank you much.
One, one, one more, one more announcement if I may, Council President.
Yes, sir.
I neglected to mention, uh, what, something that everybody knows about, just as a reminder, because it's coming up, is the, uh, annual gift to give Thanksgiving feast that is, um, sponsored at the, uh, Orange Fire Department Headquarters, um, on Central Avenue. It is on Thursday, November twenty-second, that's Thanksgiving from eleven AM to two PM. Um, i- i- it's something that, you know, has a long history in Orange. And, uh, please come out again for November twenty-second, eleven to two PM for the Thanksgiving feast at the Orange Fire Department.
We also will be hosting one at Saint Matthews. I think so that no one should be hungry on Thanksgiving Day.
Can I take some plates?
Sure.
I'm taking plates on both.
You bringing tupperware?
Absolutely, no, I'm just taking some plates.
Ordinance on second reading public hearing, forty-eight dash twenty eighteen. An ordinance to amend chapter two ten zoning and land development of the Code of the City of Orange Township and provide for a planning and zoning technical advisory review committee by adding one new member. Are there any citizens who wish to speak? Is there a motion to close citizen comments?
Move second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
Move.
Second.
Move by Williams, second by Ms. Johnson.
On the motion?
On the motion.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams.
Reverend please, through you to the city attorney, um, to just report this, uh, explanation page, was copies made for the public as well?
No.
Okay, so going forward, forgive me for, you know, sitting out. Thank you, Council President.
You're quite welcome.
Roll call, Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Forty-nine dash twenty eighteen. An ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Orange Township and J Rossi Paint and Wallpaper, Joseph J Rossi and Anne Marie P Rossi to relocate JP Rossi Paint and Wallpaper to four twenty-five Main Street, Orange, New Jersey. To make improvements to four twenty-five Main Street, Orange, New Jersey, necessary for business operation and to accept the transfer of real property from J Rossi Paint and Wallpaper, Joseph J Rossi and Anne Marie P Rossi to the City of Orange Township. Are there any citizens who wish to speak?
Janice Morrell. I reiterate, I would like to have the auditor's presentation and a budget consultant. I did not mean Frank McInerney and I did not, I'm sorry, I did not mean Frank McInerney. I mentioned Dieter Lurch by name.
Frank McInerney is the auditor.
Dieter Lurch was the last budget consultant. If you have a new budget consultant, then that person should come forward, address what the impact will be for two thousand and eighteen and what the impact will be for the two thousand nineteen budget year. I stand with that request.
The city council has a budget consultant. The city also has an auditor. The auditor, as I said before in my response, is the McInerney firm. The auditor is precluded from making a presentation by the rules that govern auditing and municipal securities rulemaking board. If the city council would like their budget consultant to do a presentation, they're welcome to do that. The auditor cannot.
I understand that. I'm asking for a projection in terms of what the impact will be for ordinance forty-nine and quite frankly, I'm going to ask for the same thing for fifty and fifty-one, what the impact will be upon the budget in the future and what the impact will be upon the residents and other property tax owners.
Thank you much. Madam Kirk, or Mr. Feld?
Again, my name is Jeffrey Feld. I provided a letter with a lot of questions and comments. I hope they're incorporated, rated in the record. Um, sequentially, I think we should be talking about fifty-first, but I'll go to- Sequentially, I think we should be talking about fifty-first, but I'll go to forty-nine. There are certain questions I have. One is where the city is acquiring three different properties from the Rossis. Based on the appraisal that was posted, I think on Monday or late Sunday, only one of the properties was appraised. There's a difference between the appraisal values and the assessment values. I think it would behoove everyone that we have the person that created the appraiser and our tax assessor come here and explain to us the different methodologies and the differences. In the packet I delivered you today, I discovered yesterday that last year, our state legislature adopted something called the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights about assessment rights. And I think this ties into like the transparency, that it's not just only what is the values that they're acquiring as to both different locations, because this is a generic question, but as to the Rossis, I think we should have an agreement, because there is going to be an agreement that there's like a holdover, a six-month holdover. That agreement should be drafted. We should see that now. In addition, when the Rossis acquire the property across the street, we should know, going forward, for the first couple of years, what will be the assessment value, because they're going to be liable to pay taxes. Will it be based on one point nine-nine, whatever the purchase price is of that price, or will it be based on the assessment values of their three current properties? I think we should have those kind of questions answered upfront, rather than having fights down the road. And I think if we just put this off for ten days, I don't think that's a real big problem. I mean, we didn't, I didn't cause the problems, the citizens didn't cause the problems. If you look at one of the first agreements, it was signed in July, you know, across the street. But I'm just saying to you, there's questions as to the valuations, and there's questions of fiduciary duties. Because our first reading, this council, as a group, as fiduciaries of public trust, approved the transaction without the benefit of appraisals. Because if you look at the date of the appraisals, they're not till like October fifteenth or fourteenth, that's what they've done. You don't retain an appraiser to do it till October second, probably after you adopt these things on first reading. I'm just saying, let's create the record, let's close the holes now. Because there've been past years, we went to the public meetings last time, let's make sure our i's are dotted, our t's are crossed. There's questions as to the valuations, and it's really the questions as to the other piece of property, but let's understand, when the Rossis acquired this piece of property, what is going to be the assessed value for it? Is it going to be one point nine, or is it going to be in the other one? We just, I think the public needs to know, and I think we have the rights, based on a statute that was enacted last year.
Kathleen Gordon in Orange. I have similar comments and similar concerns. I too, I did too review the assessed value of the Rossi properties. It comes up to below a million dollars. I would like also to know if this property is being in exchange given to the Rossis, are they, you know, prepared to now pay suddenly two million, assessed, you know, taxes after two million dollars assessed value, or suddenly this assessed value is just the, or the appraised value rather, is just a number that would be then ignored and drops back to the old assessed value, which by the way is, for the new property that they acquire, is also a million while it is being purchased for them for two million, and obviously, the eight-hundred-thousand part of it is going to be moving expenses, but a good part of it has to be, I would think, improvements made. So we are interested in this, and further, I am going to, again, look into at, with ordinance fifty to twenty-eighteen, further look into the discrepancies between assessed values and appraised values. Thank you.
Derek Henry, two fifty-three Ogden Street, Orange, New Jersey. I would greatly implore the council to reconsider the amount of this move only because in my new elected role as board member, if I make a decision of this magnitude without any supporting documentation, it is most likely that they're probably going to crucify me next to Jesus and the two thieves. And so far, there's been no supporting documentation of this number. Thank you.
Is there a motion to close citizen comments?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Johnson Jr. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to adopt on final?
Move.
Second.
Move by Williams, second by Easton.
On the motion?
On the motion.
Seeing on roll call, Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty dash twenty-eighteen. An ordinance of the City of Orange Township authorizing the acquisition of four-twenty-five Main Street, Orange, New Jersey, land also identified as block twenty-five, block twenty-two oh one, for the purchase price of one million nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. Any citizens wish to speak?
I am Jeffrey Feld, I could do this to preserve, create a record for later on. The same objections, the appraisal, when was the appraisal shown to the public? And it's interesting, not one council member has asked one very interesting question. Is this property located in a redevelopment area? We've been going through the master plan, there's been maps, these properties aren't located in a redevelopment plan. Why does the ordinance make references to the redevelopment statute? This is a private sale, it's a different statute that controls, and it goes back to the fiduciary duties. And we don't really have to go into, it's based in my written objections that are posted in here. When we look at the equity holders, or who they were, the State Commission of Investigation, some of the things that happened under some people's watches, the discrepancy between the assessed value and the purchase price, and that we know because of the date of the appraisals, and when they were given to the public and to the council, people agreed to a numbers that didn't exist. And this ties into the next ordinance that you had to do, is that unless we have a bond, we can't pay for this. And someone signed this document in July. In July, there was sort of a representation by the city that they had the money to buy this. I know how you're going to vote, but I just had to create a record for someone else that's going to look at it.
Council, I'll just, Council President?
Yes, Mr. Hartwell.
When citizen's comments are, I just want to correct the record.
Kathleen Gordon, again. Don't have to reiterate what I already said. And obviously, there was no discussion on the points that the public made. Nobody spoke for the previous ordinance, nor currently for this ordinance. And the council anonymously voted yes. This gives us the sense that council comments is a plain dog and pony show. No matter what we say, the decisions are already made. And obviously, the thinking is that all those people who don't show up are represented by you, but all those people who do show up and oppose are not representing the public's interest. I am also going to put again out the observations that I made, that this property, four-twenty-five, has been purchased, I think, two thousand and seven, for four hundred, about in the four hundred thousand dollar range. It has assessed later, one can go here back in the city assessments to two thousand and eleven. At two thousand and eleven, it was in the nine hundred thousand dollar range. You know, it rose double between those four years, and the last five years stayed at one million dollars. It rose less than ten percent in assessment. Now, this suddenly is being sold by public, purchased by public money for two million dollars. It doesn't seem to be a clean deal. No matter whether the assessment and appraiser value is different, it shouldn't be hundred percent different. When we, the public, sell our properties, we are happy if we get the amount that the city is appraising our properties for. So there is just no transparency in this, and this doesn't look like a clean deal. And if you are not interested in looking into it, that's, in my opinion, you are not doing your due diligence. Thank you.
I would admonish speakers from making allegations that are unsupportable and non-factual, and which impugn the integrity of parties either working for or elected to work for the citizens. If you make a comment that is unsupported by facts, there are consequences.
There's also consequences from yelling, from crap.
You go, Mr. Henry?
Yes. Derek Henry, two fifty-three Ogden Street, Orange, New Jersey. I would ask for the extension of, I guess, for lack of a better term, professional courtesy, just for elected officials, I guess, to, I guess, newly elected official, just to, so we're on the same page, and I'm not speaking in an uninformed fashion. The records of the assessment from Dana Roan's office, I have three here. Thank you. In the recent appraisal, I guess, or assessment from Dana Roan's office, as per, assessed, February twenty-seventeen, the assessment is listed at one million forty-four thousand dollars. While I was obtaining my recent certifications, you know, they taught about why there, the reasonings, for lack of a better term, behind increase in value are tenants, architectural improvements, technical upgrades, or interior remodeling. And to my knowledge, I don't know if any of that occurred at four-twenty-five Main Street. So in regards to the purchase of the property at one point nine-nine million dollars versus the assessed value from February twenty-seventeen at a million forty-four thousand dollars, I would humbly request supporting documentation in regards to the approximate, I want to say ninety-five percent purchase price versus the assessment from Dana Roan's office down at the county. Before we enter into this agreement, because the, because there appears to be significant unresolved issues, which as taxpayers or homeowners would be great, would be greatly requested for transparency and clarification. Thank you.
Is there a motion to close citizen comments?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Johnson Jr., second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams.
I just want to make the record clear that I know for me, and probably with my council colleagues, that the reason I'm not asking questions is because we, and I attended, we did public forums, and Council President, if you remember, the night when we did the initial, I asked that we can do the forums, and I reiterated the dates and reminded the people, please come out so that you can ask all your questions. So there were, there were two forums that, while there were intimate crowds, there was a lot of information discussed in depth at both forums. And so I know for me, I am well-informed on this project, and also I believe that both of those forums were also televised, and they were replayed. I know they were televised, and yet they were replayed, because I talked to a constituent who said that she actually saw the replay of it. So we've, it's just been, a lot of it has been discussed at length, and I know for me, that is why I am not asking questions. Thank you, Council President.
Quite welcome.
And I just wanted to also say, assessed value is not market value, it's not the market value, so just be mindful of that.
Council President?
Councilwoman Wooten?
I normally don't say anything, but I'm going to make a statement, and I hope I'm up, like, close enough to this mic. For people to come up here and say that we don't read, or we don't ask questions, you don't know what we ask, you don't know what we read. You don't know how many times we've gone to the BA, and I can't even talk now because somebody is mumbling in the background. When you come up here and talk, we're quiet. I don't ever interrupt anybody, I look at you, I'm engaging with you. Every letter that Mr. Fels you send out, I read, I do research. So for you to come up here and say that we don't read, or we don't know what's going on, or our council comments are a dog and pony show, is, I didn't say you said that, sir, it's not right. It's not right. So it's not a dog and pony show when we're out in whatever the degree weather was on Saturday, raking and picking up trash and liquor bottles in the neighborhood. It's not a dog and pony show when we're paying rent for people. It's not a dog and pony show when we're buying groceries and food and Pampers for people. It's not a dog and pony show when we're with Chris Hartwell to one and two o'clock in the morning, talking about the issues that go on in the city. So for you to say that, it's not right. It's not nice, and it's not right. And I normally don't say anything, but I have stuff going on in my house right now. I don't have to listen to seven or eight people come to a city council meeting every two weeks and tell us how horrible we are, or tell us how dumb we are.
Amen to that.
It's not right. And some of you need to be ashamed of yourselves. Instead of calling us and say, let me explain this to you, Adrian, some people do. They do call, they do email, they do send us information, but some of you don't. Everybody knows I live at sixty-six Hampton Terrace, everybody knows, because I have so many people knocking on my door. But for us to sit here and just be ridiculed every two weeks, every other week, it's not right. We are a community, our zip code is oh-seven-oh-five-oh, we're all in this together. I don't know who said that, we're all in the same boat. And we want this community to be a great community, and it can be a great community. So instead of coming and So instead of coming and telling us that we're horrible, and we do have constituents that contact us, so the people, when you come up to the mic, you're not the people, you're one person.
Amen to that.
You're not the people.
No.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Council President.
You're quite welcome. Was that the teacher coming out of you?
It was.
All right.
Council President?
Councilwoman Easton.
Echo with the other counsel. Because as I walk my community and the constituents, the one question they ask is why do we let people come up here, the same people, every council meeting, and say the same thing? We have to move forward in a positive manner. And when you go to the forums, as Councilwoman Williams, it's the same people asking the same questions they come here tonight and asked over again. What's the point of having forums? That's what I kept saying. Why are we having the forums when we are still addressing the same people? And I, it just one other note that really irked me. We had coffee with a cop over at the police station, and the resident comes back and says it was a disaster because the same people went there and monopolized the conversation, and they didn't get a chance to talk. So that wasn't even a good thing, because people don't realize, you are not the only people that live in this community. And for the voter turnout yesterday, it means somebody's doing a good job. Nobody came to the polls and told us how bad we were. And, and me and Mr. Mays visited one of my constituents last week because he had an issue, and the refreshing thing he said to me, this Councilwoman, I don't, my taxes went up, but I don't mind as long as I'm getting service. So I need you guys to help me with some issues. He wasn't complaining about his taxes going up, he just wants the services that he's paying for. And to Mr. Phel, he's good at quotes. Best advice you ever got, never quit if you know you're right. If you're wrong, admit it and move on. So we, we have done our research, we're right in what we're doing, but you're not going to admit you're wrong, because as you read, I don't read half of the stuff he says, I'm sorry, I don't read it, because he digs up stuff from 50 years ago. That ship has sailed, let it stay so sailing. You don't need to keep dragging up the pad.
Councilwoman Easton, if you can just not...
Try to move on.
Address him, I appreciate it.
And we can't move on, because everything he stopped, I mean, you're really killing our trees. Nobody does all of that paperwork anymore. Thank you, Council President.
You're quite welcome. Any other council members, while we're on this motion here?
Roll call, Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Somers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
51-2018. A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition and renovation of 425 Main Street by and in the city of Orange Township in the county of Vestick, state of New Jersey, Vestity, appropriating $3 million thero, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,857,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. Any citizens wish to speak?
Janice Morrell, I may sound like a broken record, but I would still like to know what the impact will be, what the projections are for the next couple of years on our taxes for these three ordinances. And looming behind it is a recreation or wellness center, don't care what it is. All I'm looking at at this point is for some answers in terms of projections of what it is going to cost us, because our taxes are going to increase. That's all I ask.
Thank you.
My name is William Hathaway, resident of Orange, 232 Lincoln Avenue. I'm just going to say this. Thank you, members of the council, for passing this stuff tonight. We need a place for our children, we have programs in Orange, we have a building that sits on Main Street, trying to get renovated, and we negatively attacking it. So I wish the people of Real Talk would stop attacking our community, reviving our young people. Again, this is a building going to be happening for our young people in our community, and I commend the administration, the mayor, the council, for a job well done tonight to get this project going for our community. Mr. Hartwick, thank you very much for your hard work. Again, I wish people would stop off social media attacking our community about our young people. This is for our young people in our community. Thank you very much, members of the council, for passing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
My name is Jeffrey Feld, I'm just making a record that Judge Rothschild and Judge Kennedy asked me to do in various cases, that we create an evidentiary legislative record. The questions we have to ask is, the ordinance that you're looking at does not bear a signature of any attorney. If you look at later on tonight, you're going to look at the RAB ordinance, and it bears the signature of Special Outside Redevelopment Council. It did not have a signature when we had the first reading. And at that time, we were told that there was going to be an opinion from bond council. I made an open request, I have not received it. I just want that the record to reflect that the ordinance that you're going to consider is not, does not bear a signature of any attorney, and that there was a bond council opinion as to exempting, as to the exemption to going to the local finance board for approval of this transaction, where you are going for the RAB, and you are going for the street improvements, but this one, you're not going back to the local finance board. I just want the record to reflect that.
Thank you.
Kathleen Gordon, I also just want to put it on the record that this ordinance, that is 50-2018, 51-2018, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition and renovation of 425 Main Street, it contains a language that the CFO certified, the availability of payment, there is a certificate, I don't know what you got, but the ordinance available for the public is not signed by the CFO, Joy Laskari, the due payment certificate is unsigned, certificate of introduction, not signed, certificate of supplemental debt statement, where the city clerk certifies that the attached supplemental debt statement was prepared, executed, and sworn by Joy Laskari, CFO, as of October 2, 2018, and filed in her office, and with the director of DRGS, is also not signed. Thank you.
Thank you.
See a motion to close citizen comments?
Move. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Johnson Jr. On the motion?
On the motion, Mr. BA. First of all, as I think I indicated on the second, or at some point around that time, bond council will sign all ordinance, will sign all ordinances related to bond council or that they draft. The other ordinances related to the Crane Street development and the resolutions were signed by the attorney working on those. That's simply because it's not fair to the city attorney to have him opining as to form and substance on ordinances in a peculiar specialty like bond law. And so ordinance 51-2018, if I don't already have the signed ordinance, I will be sure to get it before it's published. But with regard to a couple of other comments, one, bond council has written to me indicating that ordinance 51-2018, because we are not intending to go to permanent financing under the Qualified Bond Act, we're only intending to issue notes, does not require an LFB hearing. I do have that in writing. It's the province of the mayor, with the advice of the city attorney, and consultation with the business administrator, as to whether or not we ask an outside council to provide a written opinion. And in many instances, to avoid unnecessary costs, we will simply ask them to explain or to write us the answer to the question. We've done that here. The supplemental debt statement that was referred to by Ms. Gordon, I don't know if she was here at the October 2 meeting, but I actually filed the supplemental debt statement during the meeting from the podium on television to the clerk. With regard to the certificates that are attached to the bond ordinance, they don't need to be filled out until after the bond ordinance is fully adopted and has been, and the notice of adoption has been published. Now, with regard to the appraisals, right, relating to ordinance 59, or 50 and 49, as indicated in the public forums, and I believe when I did the public presentation to the council, we did engage in appraisal. There is no legal requirement for that appraisal to be dated at any date other than prior to the date that you finally adopt the ordinance. And even that isn't spelled out in the statute. We operated under the constraint that if we approved the contract or entered into and got the property sellers to agree to the contracts, those contracts were subject to city council approval. If we didn't have an appraisal that came back that justified the valuation, then that would all be shared publicly, and the city council could act accordingly. There is a huge difference between assessed valuation for property tax purposes and fair market valuation for purposes of an appraisal. Furthermore, one speaker got up and said that the property was valued at $400,000 in Due to the wonders of the internet, I was able to pull up the property detail report from the county records, and the $400,000 assessment was done in 1992, not 2007. Furthermore, as it relates to commercial property in Orange, keep this in mind, the property here is bigger in area than the property at 377 Crane Street, which is also the subject of other action this evening before this board. The property at 377 Crane Street sold for $4.8 million in a fair market, arms-length transaction. The only difference is this is a better shaped piece of property for purposes of development and building, because the parcel on 377 Crane Street is oddly shaped. It's shaped like a piece of pie. This is a squared parcel. Secondly, the benefit that site has is that it is directly adjacent to the train station, for which some people would pay a premium. But this parcel is only a block and a half from a train station, very short block. So while people can reasonably disagree as to valuation methods and valuations set forth in appraisals, you can't compare a fair market appraisal to a tax assessment. Those just are not comparable. In terms of how we judge the negotiations regarding whether or not we were overpaying or underpaying, I was in direct consultation with our assessor, who's also a licensed appraiser, and I had pulled all of the tax records and sale records for a number of properties and the history on this property. So also, if you look at the two appraisals, and you look at this deal in the context of one transaction, the assessed valuation for the two properties that are being acquired is greater than what the city is committing to pay for those properties. So as I said in all three presentations that I gave, the worst-case scenario is that the deal falls apart at a later date, and we have acquired two properties that have a higher value than what we paid for them. So with that, there's one other point, and that's this. I was aware, and remain very cognizant of the fact, that the bank property appraisal was going to come in somewhat lower than the agreed-upon price. However, I factored into that negotiation what it would cost the city to actually condemn the property in order to take it for furtherance of the project. And I just want to share that if we had to go out and hire a condemnation attorney, and that that condemnation attorney had to work through to a trial on the valuation of the property, the estimated cost of a condemnation attorney, it's a unique specialty, would be approximately $200,000. On top of that, we would have to hire a valuation specialist. The valuation specialist would have to prepare a condemnation appraisal. This is not a condemnation appraisal that you're looking at. This is a fair market value appraisal. Condemnation appraisal would cost us approximately $15,000. And on top of that, the valuation expert who does the appraisal would have to testify, sit through depositions, testify in court. So you're looking at probably a total all-in cost for the valuation expert of approximately $50,000 to $60,000. That's $260,000 on top of what the appraised value is, which puts you almost directly at what we're paying. So, and from a public policy perspective, it's always far better when dealing with longtime taxpayers, property owners, to see if you can work out these transactions on what we call the path of least resistance, or the one that is going to cause the least consternation within the community with the property owners and other property owners. There is a tremendous fluctuation taking place in connection with property values within the city. And it is not an exact science. We had no disagreement with anyone that appraisals were required. Reasonable people can differ over what those appraisals, how they're done, and what they arrive at in terms of its conclusion. But the requirements and the transaction that's been structured for the values that we've seen, the administration is comfortable with.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
And I just want to, because Counsel President, you too, Mr. Hartwig, you gave, when the four hundred thousand, you gave the date that that, you said nineteen ninety-two?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and that's when the principals purchased it, back in nineteen ninety-two?
It's either when they purchased it or when they refinanced it.
I just want to clarify, thank you.
Madam Kirk.
Roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Ordinance is on first reading and introduction. Fifty-two dash twenty eighteen was amended. The amendment is the address was incorrect. Is, the ordinance said three ninety-nine, it was supposed to be three three nine White Street. Fifty-two twenty-eight, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred, entitled Vehicle and Traffic, Section two hundred dash fifty-two dot one. Handicap parking spaces, three three nine White Street. Is there a motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Wooten. On the motion?
On the motion.
Counsel, one quick question. I know when we were writing, we were talking about, and you're going to change some of the parking, to close up the parking.
Yeah.
How is that going to impact the handicap? Or will it impact the handicap spots?
Well, when we put the changes in, and we come before the council with the plan, the hope is to do it at one time, and we'll have to build into the plan any adjustments to handicap parking at that time. So establishing it now won't affect our ability to undo it later. We will have to address the handicap parking needs, so we'll build it into the plan.
Roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty-three dash twenty eighteen, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred, entitled Vehicle and Traffic, Section two hundred dash fifty-two dot one. Handicap parking spaces, four seven nine Vernon Place. Motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. On the motion?
On the motion.
Counsel President?
Yes, Councilwoman Wooten?
I have a question about park, handicap parking spaces in general, so through you to the business administrator. So do we keep up with the, with the handicap spaces, so if someone passes away, do we take those, like, do we keep up with them? Do we take the signs down, or?
I wish we were that efficient. We're not checking the debt certificates. So, no, I didn't, you know, when, when the, when the permit comes up for renewal, we would catch that. My bigger issue, and I think I mentioned this at the finance committee meeting, is that I have some counterfeit handicap spaces popping up around town that people are actually ordering off the internet and erecting signs themselves. I've caught two so far that I've had removed, and so I've asked Public Works to coordinate with Mr. Mobley and do a review of the city's authorized handicap spaces.
And Counsel President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Through you to the VA, and we also, and I don't know, when Mr. Rahm said to diminish if it was reflected, we asked about a log, and you said you're in the process of working on a log that will
Right.
show all of handicap spaces throughout the city.
Correct. We, we actually are, are, so I think I mentioned to you that we took interns one summer, this, not this summer, but last summer, and we cataloged all of the buildings that don't have on-street parking, I'm sorry, all the buildings that don't have off-street parking, and copied and photographed all of the parking signs throughout the entire city, including handicap signs. We'll use that to update our records, and we will have a complete list of all permits that have been issued. We're also experiencing another issue with permits, and that's not updated licenses and registrations. We have people who are living here who have moved here from another community, they're asking for parking permits, but their licenses and registrations don't reflect an Orange address, and we've started to take a very hard line, because people are supposed to change their address if they move within thirty days with the division of motor vehicles. So if you get any phone calls, that's what that's about.
Okay.
Roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty-four dash twenty eighteen, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section two hundred dash fifty-two dot one. Handicap parking spaces, three fifty-seven dash three sixty-three Lincoln Avenue, apartment BA. Is there a motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Wooten. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty-five dash twenty eighteen, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section two hundred dash fifty-two point one. Handicap parking spaces, five five seven Carroll Street. A motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Wooten. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty-six dash twenty eighteen, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section two hundred dash fifty-two dot one. Handicap parking spaces, ninety-nine Bell Street. Motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty-seven dash twenty eighteen, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section two hundred dash fifty-two dot one. Handicap parking spaces, five six zero White Street. Motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty-eight dash twenty eighteen was amended. The amendment was the number moved from nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand to ten million dollars. I'll read it as amended. Fifty-eight dash twenty eighteen, a bond ordinance providing for the twenty eighteen road paving projects through New Jersey Transportation Infrastructure Bank by and in the City of Orange Township in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, appropriating ten million therefore and authorizing the issuance of ten million bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to adopt on first as amended?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Johnson Jr. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call.
Counsel President?
Mr. VA.
At the finance committee meeting, we were asked to provide a list of the roads. I said before it was thirty-eight roads. It's thirty-one roads in this ordinance, and the other seven are being done with a DOT grant. Mr. Mays has prepared the list, and it'll be filed with the clerk's office and given to the council people.
Just the list?
That's actually the pavement plan. This is the list. And as you can see from a review of the list
You have a copy?
And a comparison to the, to the pavement plan, all of the roads were taken directly from the pavement study.
And Counsel President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Through you to the VA, and this list, because it does not have the numbers on there, it is one through thirty-one as it is listed.
Yes.
Roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Before you do the roll call, I'm looking at one of them, Watchum Avenue.
Yeah, that road's a mess.
Was that a yes?
What?
I thought we just paved it.
Not Watchum. We paved
We're in a vote.
Yeah, we're, we're in a
One block over, right?
We're in the middle of a vote.
We paved one block over.
Thank you.
I was literally on this road two days ago.
Mr. VA, we're in a vote.
We're in a vote.
We're in a vote. A vote.
Could you repeat your, your vote, Councilwoman Easton, please? Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Fifty-nine dash twenty eighteen, bond ordinance of the City of Orange Township in the County of Essex, New Jersey, providing aid to a redevelopment project located at three seven four dash seventy-six and three seventy-seven Crane Street in the City of Orange Township, and appropriating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the City of Orange Township in, to finance part of the cost thereof. Is there a motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Sixty dash twenty eighteen, ordinance of the City of Orange Township to approve a tax exemption for a thirty-year period and to authorize the thirty-year exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement between the city and DNR Orange Urban Renewal LLC. A motion to adopt on first?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Jackson. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Final reading and public hearing for all of the above ordinance approved on first reading will be Tuesday, December fourth, twenty eighteen. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Item number three oh eight was amended and shall be removed. It's going to be removed for a second vote, three oh eight.
Okay.
Item number three nineteen is amended and will be removed for a separate vote. Three seventeen was pulled by the administration. Are there any other items that you wish to remove?
Three twenty-two, twenty eighteen. And, and Counsel President, we, we may not have to remove three twenty-two. Clerk, did you do your memo, did you do the memo regarding three twenty-two?
We made it, the amended resolution did not come up in time enough for a memo, so we made an announcement at the beginning of the
I'll just remove it, and you can explain it on the motion at that point.
Oh, three twenty-two, okay. So, the consent agenda consists of three oh six, three oh seven, three oh nine, three ten, three eleven, three twelve, three thirteen, three fourteen, three fifteen, three sixteen, three eighteen, three twenty, three twenty-one, three twenty-three, three twenty-four, three twenty-five, three twenty-six. Is there a motion to adopt, adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Easton, second by Councilwoman Williams. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Three oh eight, twenty eighteen, was amended, and the amendment was, it went from nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to ten million. Nine hundred and fifty million dollars, tell me the number.
Went from nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to ten million, just like the ordinance.
Thank you. So, three oh eight to adopt as amended. A resolution of the City of Orange Township in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the submission of an application to the local finance board in connection with the city's participation in the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank Transportation Program to finance the cost of the twenty eighteen road paving project. Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Johnson Jr. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Three nineteen, twenty eighteen, was
Three seventeen?
I'm sorry.
Three seventeen was pulled.
Three seventeen was withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
Yes. Three nineteen, twenty eighteen was amended. So before I read the resolution, the amended title, I'll just ask the city attorney to, to explain what the amendments were.
The amendments were just to change the title to reflect the cases that were being sent to, or proposed to be sent to Mr., to the Pennington Law Group.
Thank you. So the title reads, "A Resolution Retaining the Pennington Law Group PC as Special Counsel to Represent Municipal Employees with the Exception of the Mayor, Dwayne D. Warren, Esquire, in Matters of Stacy Baldwin versus the Township of Orange et al., Kayana Poyado versus the Township of Orange et al., and Anthony Holmes versus the City of Orange et al., in Amount Not to Exceed Twenty Five Thousand Dollars." Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
That's six yeas, one no. Motion passed. Thirty-two, twenty eighteen.
Three twenty-two?
Yeah, three twenty-two.
Three twenty-two.
Three twenty-two. Thirty-two, two.
Trying to hang in there.
Doing a good job, Madam Kirk.
Thirty-two, twenty, oh, three, two, two, twenty eighteen. This resolution, when it was submitted, it was submitted as a non-fair and open contract, in fact, it was a state contract, so the new resolution reflects the state contract number under which the contract is being awarded, and anything else you'd like to add to that?
And we knocked off the last year.
Right.
Because the state contract only goes through twenty twenty.
Correct.
So instead of including three years of maintenance, we just included two over and above this year.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt as, well, I didn't read the title, though.
Right.
Thirty, three twenty-two, twenty eighteen.
Bless you.
Bless you. A resolution authorizing the redesign and/or reconfiguration of the website for the City of Orange Township under state contract, eight nine eight five one, for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars commencing November eighth, twenty eighteen, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
On the motion, Council President?
Yes.
As request, uh, what was requested, um, um, Mr. Leneer was a follow-up memo for you, was, did, basically, to just meet your approval, and I think you were saying you didn't.
Yes, I reviewed what they sent up, and it wa, it was fine.
It met your approval.
Yes.
Thank you.
Could I just let the council know that although it's not reflected in this resolution, when we roll out this website, it will be inclusive of online payments. There will be an online payment module included for everything.
And.
If you're watching at home.
And, Council, and, and I'm sorry, Council, just follow up on, I wasn't gonna bring, because we talked about certain, different things, and make sure links and all of that.
Yeah.
All of that will be.
There's actually gonna, I'll, I'll send you all a memo, but there's gonna be a design committee meeting with the vendor, and we can address all of those issues at that time.
Thank you much. Madam Clerk?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Wooten?
So, through you to the business administrator? Don't we have somebody that does everything else?
No, not website design. So, the, the last website was put together by the person you're referring to. He's the one who actually came to me and suggested that we look at these vendors, because they have done so many municipal websites. And when we went and looked at them, including the one that Councilwoman Williams keeps sending me to, this is the company that designed them. So, we thought that the proposal was reasonable, it was on the state contract, and we made a decision to go forward because our website has some navigation challenges. I was being polite.
Thank you. Roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
New business? And walk-on resolutions and ordinances. Resolution three twenty-seven dash twenty eighteen W O is being considered for a walk-on item. The title reads, "A Resolution of the City of Orange Township Making Application to the Local Finance Board Pursuant to NJSA forty A colon two dash two six E and NJSA forty A colon three dash four." Is there a motion to walk this resolution onto the agenda?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Wooten. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Are there any citizens who wish to speak? Is there a motion to close citizen comments?
Move.
Second.
Um, motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Johnson Jr. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Three twenty-seven dash twenty eighteen W O. "A Resolution of the City of Orange Township Making Application to the Local Finance Board Pursuant to NJSA forty A colon two dash two six E and NJSA forty colon, forty A colon three dash four." Is there a motion to adopt?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
On the motion?
Councilwoman Williams.
A resolution, make an application to the local finance board, for what?
So, the, um, this application relates to the RAB bond, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar RAB bond. And because the RAB bond will have a non-conforming maturity schedule, and because we'll be seeking to have it qualified under the Qualified Municipal Bond Act, it requires the approval of the local finance board.
And, okay, and we're, and we're, are we hoping to get on it to next meeting?
We are hoping to have this and the other application that was authorized on to the local finance board agenda on December thirteenth.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
So, to the BA, is it possible to just add what the application is for in the title, so it's clear?
To amend.
How about we say, "A Resolution of the City of Orange Township Making Application to the Local Finance Board Pursuant to NJSA forty A two dash twenty-six and forty A three dash four in connection with ordinance number fifty-nine dash twenty eighteen." Is that enough?
Yes.
Thank you much. And just so the council knows, the reason this is a walk-on, is because I forgot.
So, is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Wooten. On the motion?
On the motion.
Uh, CNN roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Is there any other pending business?
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams.
I just wanna thank our clerk for her long election night. And hope that you have a good night's sleep tonight.
Thank you. I just have a, I have a suggestion. If we're gonna do these, and I think they're a good idea, we should append them as the cover of each piece of legislation they apply to, or at the back of the legislation.
It was supposed to be at the front.
Okay.